And welcome to the San Bruno City Council Regular Meeting of April the 11th, 2023. Meeting is called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Here.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hamilton?
Here.
Mayor Medina?
Here. Now we'll move on to item number three, our Pledge of Allegiance. If we all could rise, please, and if I could ask our City Manager, Javon Grogan, to lead us in the pledge this evening.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, City Manager. Also, just to point out, there's been a request to move, from a colleague, to move the public hearing, which is item seven, after Conduct of Business, which is eight. So it would come eight first, then seven. With that, we'll move on to item four, Public Comments for Items Not on the Agenda. This is the opportunity for folks who wish to speak on anything that's not on the agenda this evening have up to three minutes. Do we have any speakers?
We have no virtual hands raised, and we don't have any speaker cards.
Thank you. Therefore, we'll move on to item five, Announcements and Presentations. First is item A. It's Time for Registration is now open for the San Bruno residents to sign up for the summer camps and classes. Registration at sanbruno.ca.gov. Rec-sign up and make sure your spot is saved. Non-residents, you are able also to enjoy this community and its activities, and that opens up on April the 18th. Next, we will move on to item B. We wish, the council and the community wishes to thank Javon Grogan, our City Manager, for serving the San Bruno community from 2018 to 2023. And we had spoke earlier, before we started our six o'clock meeting, and wanted to again thank, as was already spoken and alluded to, for all of his leadership and his guidance and supporting our community through COVID in the groundbreaking and, as we can see, the construction of the Recreation's Aquatic Center, the reimagined Tanforan and Bay Hill specific plan, and we can continue. And so, City Manager is departing. Friday is his last day. He will be taking a new position up in the city of Santa Clara, and he has told us all, one of his parting requirements for us is to ensure that we support the 49ers and that we root for them all the time.
For the record, I did not say that.
No, he did not, but I think he was wishing that, in that new role, that we offer his support and thoughts. But also, as we also very well know, that it takes a very special family to sacrifice any person, whether it's an elected person, whether it's a senior leadership person, it's employees of the city of San Bruno. They always give of their time, and allowing those important things to take precedent over sometimes family matters or celebrations that unfortunately are maybe held in a distant area doing our city business or doing something for us here. So, also, City Manager, Javon, we want to thank you and we also want to thank your family, your wife, your children, all mother-in-law, all your family, who have also stood by you and stood by this community and offered their dedication to you, which in essence has assisted us to ensure that we had what we needed to keep our city moving forward and to keep a lot of the things that we will see becoming down the pike, becoming to fruition and reality. And that is through your leadership and your dedication, and we want to thank you for that. And quickly, for us, it was like, well, what can we do? And, you know, what we thought quickly is we're going to, I'm going to come down and just give you a plaque of some of the pictures of you, or I should say, of our community. And, you know, this is, they're chosen for the City Hall as an example, Narita Japan, which you went to, the, in front of El Camino Real. These are aspects that you've been a part of, and so we wanted to thank Javon D. Grogan with a huge thank you for your service, as I said, from 218 to 223. We also, and you have permission to say it's from you when you get home, but also, we would like to also give this for you to take home to your wife and tell her our immense thanks. And we all, I know all of us, wish you and your family the very best in everything you do and what you will bring to the city of Santa Clara. So, thank you, Javon. Also, on this item, we do have a speaker card, so I'd like to have the Deputy City Clerk.
Yes, we have one from Randy Torrios from the Office of San Mateo County Board of Supervisor, Dave Pine.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members and City Staff. Randy Torrios, on behalf of Board President Dave Pine, San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, I just wanted to come by to say a quick thank you to outgoing City Manager Grogan for his service the last five years to the city of San Bruno. You picked a particularly intense time to be with the city, especially intense for local government, and I know that San Mateo County was very glad to have you as a partner in all our efforts during the pandemic, in a time that was difficult for everyone. And personally, I wanted to thank you for the work that you did with the county on homeless outreach teams. It was, I thought that was very productive, and you were a great partner in that, so thank you. So, I just have a commendation signed by all the members of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors to present you, and again, thank you and good luck on your future endeavors.
Vice Mayor.
So, I'll keep it short, but, or at least I'll try to. I'm very, very thankful for the time, even though the time was short, in just a couple of years, the time I've got to work with you, Javon. It's been incredibly rewarding for me. I've learned so much about, not only the nuts and bolts of how a city runs, but just in how to deal with people and how to be a leader, and how to be a leader of people and an effective one, which you certainly are. You know, I want to thank you for putting up with all of my fairly asinine questions that I had, especially early on when I really didn't know much of anything. And you're very patient with me, and I've really, our one-on-ones twice a month are a highlight of my work and one of the high points of this job on council was the time I got to spend one-on-one with you, having deep discussions about the future of the city. And lastly, just want to thank you for helping position San Bruno where we are now. You know, for a long time, we were just kind of, I always used the kind of word, the phrase, we were kind of in a time warp, where, you know, everything was happening in our neighbors and not much happening here. And we're seeing that it is possible to respect the traditions and the essence and the sense of self that we have as this wonderful community of San Bruno while still embracing the future and preparing for the future that's going to come. And you've certainly done that through the work in positioning ourselves for Tanforan and what's happening with the RAC and all these big projects, the Bay Hill specific plan, all of those things. We're really on the track that we need to be on to take us into the future, and that is an immense part to your leadership. So, thank you.
Councilmember Medina.
City Manager Grogan, that's how I would answer the phone when he would call me, because it was always like, oh, what's this going to be? What did I do now? But in all sincerity, thank you. Thank you and your family for the many, many hours you spent getting our city in the position that we're at now. I knew when we had, the first time I met you and we interviewed, I knew we would be fortunate to have you as our City Manager. And I knew then that it wasn't going to last forever, that we'd be lucky to have you for three years. That's what I was thinking. If he can hang out for three years and like get a couple of number of things going and finish Bay Hill and get our financial engine primed and ready to go forward at a higher speed than it is now. So, your accomplishments are many, and in a city that was, Vice Mayor Hamilton said, a time warp, I would say we were suspended, a time suspension. It was just moving so slow, and change is very, very difficult. And I think we're in, the biggest thing is, we are in a better position right now due to your leadership. The council has a little bit of that, of course, as well, but together as a team and the team that you put together, and within the time of COVID, right, and making sure our community was safe, and here we are, you know, this is our last council meeting, and I just want to let you know, even though you and I disagreed at different times, right, that's okay, right? I know this council's heart is in the right place to move our city forward, and so is yours. And I think Santa Clara is very lucky to have you, and I wish you and your family the very, very best. Thank you.
Councilmember Salazar.
So, Javon, I'll say that you were absolutely the right person at the right time for the city, and I thoroughly appreciate everything that you've done for us. I knew when we hired you that, we had huge expectations for you, and we knew you would deliver, and you didn't disappoint. You absolutely, you met every goal that you set. You were very clear from the beginning what you had set out to do. You were very open and transparent about that, and in the short time that you were here, you absolutely accomplished a great deal. As Tom mentioned, you know, the respect for the traditions of this community are very important, and you absolutely embraced those, and you were still able to not only complete the work that we had started, but also put us on the right path on a number of new projects. So, you absolutely left the city better than you found it. I absolutely appreciate what you've done. Personally, I've always appreciated your leadership, your counsel, and what really felt like a friendship, and I felt that we trusted each other, and it was a good relationship that we had, and I absolutely appreciate that. So, thank you.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make it short before I start coughing. Although I only have four months' worth of compliments and words to say, I wanted to thank you for your guidance since January, as a new city council, since December, sorry, as a new city council member, guiding me to the right direction, teaching me on many things about the city and the processes, and also things that I should know about my district and also about how the city council runs and stuff. So, I really appreciate that, and I wish you good luck in Santa Clara. And perhaps if you decided to stay in San Bruno, then it would be a good time to basically recollect and ask you for more questions and guidance. Thank you.
Thanks. And then I'm going to see if our City Manager, because I know he'll talk about his team, and I was just reflecting back to this facility, because you've had to deal with COVID, which, as I said earlier, there was no blueprint, and so you went through something that was traumatic and for all of us. And I was remembering back, because you've dealt with other situations in this community very well, and you came to me one day when it was February, I believe, and you said, they had Thursday night bingo here, and it was for all ages. And if you can imagine, you've got people in here playing bingo, this is serious business. And I remember, we were at City Hall, and the City Manager said, I need to go up there because of this, that, and the other thing, and we need to shut it down. You want to come with me? Why don't you come up with me, Mayor? And I'm thinking, oh, he's smart, because he can deflect right to me. But we came down, and you stood up here, and you shut it down for the precautionary matter because of the cruise ship and some folks had been in here. Some may have thought that was, you know, maybe getting ahead of the game. I think it was the right call. That's why I was happy to be up here with you, to deflect what I could, because they did leave, and those were actions that were taken that the rest is history as far as what you did with your leadership and the team. So, with that, I just was reflecting upon that for some reason. So, Mr. City Manager, I leave it to you.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Been an immense honor to serve as the City Manager for this wonderful city. Thank you, Mayor, for hosting the reception earlier, and I talked a lot then, so I won't talk a lot now. I'll just say that timing is everything, and leadership matters, but leadership is nothing without a wonderful team behind you. And so, all of the accomplishments that we've had and with your leadership and guidance, it means nothing, and it wouldn't have been possible without an amazing staff. And so, I just want to thank everyone that works for the city of San Bruno for everything they do, because as City Manager, you help lead the ship, but you don't propel it. So, thank you for everything. Thank you, City of San Bruno.
Thank you again. And with that, we will move on to Consent. All items are considered routine or implemented in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. There will be one single public comment, period, for all items on this section unless a council member requests to pull an item for a separate vote. First, to my colleagues, are there any items for a separate vote? Vice Mayor.
I'd like to pull item 6E for a separate vote.
E for separate. Thank you. Any other items for a separate vote? Seeing, hearing, none. Are there any items for comment or question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item A is in Apple.
Okay.
And item J, as in Javon.
Okay. Any other items at this time? Okay, let's go ahead and take care of the items A and J first. Item A, approve the draft special meeting minutes for, and there's a variety of dates that are listed. Go ahead, Councilmember Medina.
Yes, I'm primarily interested in the March 25th minutes, to see if that, the presentation materials could be added to those minutes, and can the summary of the council priorities also be provided in those minutes so that we could have kind of a, since it wasn't recorded, that the public can, in the future, go back and see what was determined and what was shown in the meeting.
I don't see, I'm looking over to staff, and I'm seeing that that's okay. As far as it not being recorded, I don't want to give the implication that it was, something went wrong technology-wise or otherwise. That's the council policies adopted on December 13th. All five back then had adopted that practice. Is there, but is that, anything you want to add to the attorney?
No, Mayor Medina, I was just going to say, when it comes to minutes, the minutes are the council's minutes. I do think that your policies and procedures say you're going to have action minutes, but again, they're your minutes. So, if the council wants to take action to add something to the minutes, it's within your discretion to do so.
You were saying the presentation. Is the presentation on the website for that or no? I just don't recall.
I don't want to say that it is without double checking, but, and we really primarily didn't have a presentation as much as we shared a cloud document and annotated based on the discussion. And so, I certainly know that that is not online. And so, but should the council want to include a summary of what happened as annotated on your strategic initiative matrix? We can certainly do that. And as I speak, I know that there were at least two presentations, one from CityNet and one from the Public Works Department. And so, we can make sure that those are encapsulated, and if you would like those attached, we can do that as well.
And I'm just thinking out loud, so maybe that's because there's, it's not on the website, where before people could go to those and then download those, so they would have had access to those. I think that's, I'm just, so I'm saying, what I'm thinking is, okay, if we start this and we're adding that to minutes, because to me, when I used to go to the, when the city clerk's office are actually the physical minutes of the meeting, and now we're making attachments to it, is what I'm somewhat hearing. I just don't want to, I want to go down a path that we're consistent on.
Certainly, Mayor. And so, there are really two options. One, we can post all the materials online, and they can have a home online, or the council can have them included as an attachment in the minutes. You are correct. Normal customary would not have them in the minutes. You would take action minutes as per your normal process, but again, both are totally valid, and City Council has a decision before it.
And thank you, City Manager. And I think that's the matter, is just having it available somewhere to sit so people can reference it and have that information. It's just in my practice, and I used to work at City Hall, it's just, or for the city, I just don't, haven't seen that of practice. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that the ask here is just for that one, that happened to be our yearly, you know, and it was a day-long strategic initiatives session. We're not looking to change ongoing practices for how we handle minutes or anything. This is a one-off request. Councilmember Medina?
Specifically for that one, yes.
Great. But it can then come up that we've done it before, the next one, and so you are potentially starting a precedent that...
Well, it's a precedent if it goes on, but for this time, it's not the intention to be precedent, and it could be pulled up at any time at the council's pleasure to add something to the minutes. They are the council's minutes, but I think we probably spent too much time talking about it already, but I'm done.
Okay. Any other comments or Councilmember Salazar?
I'll just say, because the minutes are before us to approve right now, I would suggest that we move forward with the minutes the way they are, but I would support Councilmember Medina's request to put the presentations online somewhere for reference.
So, that's the presentation, and then the most important thing of that retreat was the priorities that were set.
Yes.
And there is no, there's no written documentation of that, of what we revised. So, I think it's important that that's shared. It's done.
I don't think anybody's not saying it's about where to put it. I think it's minutes versus online. It's the question that's...
Got it. Got it. Right on.
Not about doing it. It's just where is it appropriate? I think that is. City Manager.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the end of the retreat, staff did commit to summarize the changes that you've made and send them to council in an off-agenda memo. I do know that a draft of that has been prepared. I reviewed it a few days ago, and we still need to finalize that, but we still intend to send you that on an off-agenda memo. We can, that can be the document that we post online if so directed. And as in normal practices, you will receive that document throughout the year as you have your quarterly updates in your, of your strategic initiatives. And so, it does eventually make its way into the packet as well.
Perfect. Okay. Then that, I think that takes care of everything in the update is going forward. Correct. Is there any other questions coming that's good for everyone? Okay, let's go to J. Consider adoption of a resolution accepting the Huntington-San Antonio Bicycle Corridor project as complete, authorizing the filing of notice of completion with the San Mateo County Recorder's Office and authorizing release of the construction contract retention in the amount of $48,502.24. Councilmember Medina?
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for reading that. That's great. So, I live within, I live within 1,000 feet of the project boundary, and so I'm going to recuse myself on this consent agenda item.
Thank you. All right. So, let's see if there's any, are there any comments on the recusal? Let's see if there's any members of the public that wish to speak on all of the items under consent, with the exception of E, which has been pulled for separate vote.
There are no virtual hands raised, and we have no speaker cards.
Do I have any action from council on all items A through L, with the understanding of the recusal from Councilmember Medina on J?
Through the chair, I'll make the motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? 5O, passed unanimously. Now, we'll move on to item E. Adopt an ordinance of the city of San Bruno amending Article III zoning of Title 12 land use of the San Bruno Municipal Code amending Section 12.300.070 to limit commercial cannabis retail sales, which are storefronts, to the transit corridor plan area MX-4, TOD-1, TOD-2, and PD zones. Reduce the number of commercial cannabis retail sale permits from three to one. Allow a maximum of two cannabis dispensary facilities permits in the M1 zone north of San Bruno Avenue and east of El Camino Real and delineate Section 4.70.070, and making a finding of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. Vice Mayor.
So, I pulled it specifically because it's the longest one under consent, and I wanted to make you read it. No, seriously, the, you know, we've had lots of discussions on this, and it's no, it should be no surprise to anyone paying attention that I am not in favor of this item. I feel that these changes do not help the city in any way, and goes against our shared goal and stated goal of increasing revenues for the city. And the fact that the Planning Commission concurred with that and rejected these changes unanimously supports that argument. So, I was, I'm pulling this for a separate vote so that I may vote no.
Thank you. Other comments from colleagues on this topic? Let's see if there's any members of the public that wish to speak on this item?
There are no virtual hands raised, and we have no speaker cards.
Okay. Bring it back to council. Is there any action on this item? Move to approve? Is there a second?
A second.
Motion made, Salazar, second, and Alvarez to approve item E. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, no?
No.
No.
It was three ayes of Alvarez, Salazar, Rico Medina, two noes, Vice Mayor Hamilton, and Councilmember Marty Medina. It passes 3-2. With that, we will move on to our next item, which we are going to move on to item eight, which is Conduct of Business.
Conduct of Business, item 7A. Consider adoption of a resolution directing staff to initiate the property owner notice and protest process as required by Proposition 218 for the fiscal year 2023 and 2024 solid waste rate increase proposed by Ecology San Bruno.
Thank you very much. And now, we will turn this first over to our interim finance director.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Medina and Member...
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Medina and members of the council. Can we get the presentation up, please? There we go. Okay, so the item before you now is the Prop 218 noticing for the solid waste collection rate adjustments. And the objective tonight is to consider an adoption of the, of the resolution directing staff to initiate the property owner notice and the protest process as required by Prop 218 with respect to the proposed and recommended rate increases. And so on the agenda tonight, we're going to walk you through the background, what the proposed rate adjustments are, the Proposition 218 process, and the public hearing notice, the proposed timeline, ultimately the recommended action, and, and then we'll be available for questions. And so at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Matt Lee, our, the city's Public Works Director.
Thanks, Bobby. Good evening. My name is Matt Lee, Public Works Director. I wanted to start first with a background on the franchise agreement itself. The previous franchise agreement with, between the City of San Bruno and Recology San Bruno was executed in July 1st of 1998 and was set to expire on June 30th, 2024. At the time for the July 20s, July 2022 rate increase, it was projected at 29% due to CPI and other cost indexes. At that time, council directed staff to enter into discussions with Recology to work on a new franchise agreement. And with that, council approved the new franchise agreement on September 27th, 2022, which sets the annual scheduled rate increases for January 1st, 2023, July 1st, 2023, and July 1st, 2024. The new franchise agreement was effective on January 1st, 2023, and it included additional services such as organics waste recycling, compliance requirements for commercial businesses, solid waste collection services for, for catch basins, and billing and administration, and compost giveaway. The rate increase when the franchise agreement took effect was 6.03% for residential and 16.81% for commercial. As, as you look at this graph, there's actually two tables there. The table on the top in blue highlights the residential rate increase, and then the commercial, the REBUX increase. When you go to the green table below, the first column is the residential component breakdown, and the second column to the right is the commercial component breakdown. So as you can see, the scheduled rate increases in July, or sorry, January 1st, 2023, included a 6% rate increase for residential service plus a 0.03% for compost giveaway. And on the commercial side, it was a 6% rate increase for commercial service and a 10%, 10.81% rate increase for organics waste recycling compliance. Now moving on to the proposed rate, the garbage rate service request increase is at 9.58% for this current upcoming fiscal year. For example, the residential rates for a 32-gallon totter would be three point, or $3.30, and a commercial 64-gallon totter would be $9.25 per month. The new rates will take into effect on July 1st, and the components of those rate increases include a 1.23% for customer billing by Recology, a 6.35% for the franchise fee for street sweeping and catch basin waste removal, and a 2% annual scheduled rate increase per the agreement. For the street sweeping and catch basin waste removal franchise fee, staff had, and had initial discussions with the union about Recology performing the street sweeping and catch basin trash capture device cleanings, in which the union expressed the preference for city staff to perform that function. Due to that preference, the city rescinded the meet and confer request and continued discussions with Recology on a franchise fee for street sweeping and catch basin waste removal. I wanted to add that the franchise fee itself will fund the city expenditures for the apportioned trash removal through the street sweeping and catch basin waste removal efforts. The stormwater fund currently is running at a deficit of about $1 million, and the franchise fee will help offset operating expenditures for a portion of the street sweeping and catch basin removal operation. It does not address other operating expenses and any of the unfunded stormwater capital needs. The cost allocation was determined through a study from R3, and they determined that the attributed portion to the collection of solid waste generated by the city rate, rate pairs were approximately $800,000 with about a half split from, for annual street sweeping and catch basin waste removal. The portion was approximately 80% of the overall operational costs. This graph has a lot of dense detail in it, but a lot of it is kind of just a rehashing of what I just discussed in the background. I would like for you to focus on the bar graph on the right. From the residential rate increase itself, I wanted to highlight that the first component of, first component in green is the customer billing, which is approximately 1.23% of the 9.58, and then a 6.35% increase for street sweeping and catch basin waste removal, and a 2% for the scheduled rate increase. Another way to look at this is, and this is just a, in a table with an additional column on the right of what we previously looked at. If you look at the breakdown itself, there is, in the green table below, on the column all the way on the right, there is a scheduled rate increase of 2%, customer billing at 1.23%, and street sweeping at 6.35%, totaling And for the residential solid waste rate comparison, the average for the cities in the surrounding areas is $38.55, with our rate increase for a residential 32-gallon totter, it is now $37.79, still below the average of, of the surrounding area. The costs for the different cart sizes are shown here. As you can see, we spoke about it a little bit before. It can vary for a 16-gallon cart with a $2.09 increase to a 96-gallon cart, a residential cart for a $9.91 increase. On the commercial side, the 64-gallon totter would be an additional $9.25 increase. And with that, I would like to bring our interim finance director, Bobby McGee, back up to talk about Proposition 218.
Thank you. So as the council knows, Prop 218 was a voter initiative in 1996, which limited city's powers to impose fees for property-related services. And so that proposition does apply to solid waste collection services. It requires a written notice by mail and a public hearing at least 45 days after the mailed notice. And at the public hearing, the council will need to consider the protests against the proposed fee. And then if the written protests against the proposed fee are presented by a majority of property owners, then the city would not be able to impose the fee. So the, the public notice, I know this slide's a little bit busy here. On the right, that is, and it's included in your packet as well, that is the, the recommended notice that staff has created that we would like to send out. The franchise agreement requires the rate increase on July 1, 2023 for garbage, recycling, and organics collection services. And if the, the council ultimately approves the staff recommendation tonight, then the city will mail out the notice that you see there on the right. And so tonight, we're asking the council to direct staff to provide that 45-day notice. And if that is approved, then on April 17th, the notices will be mailed out to start the 45-day period. And so staff would return in that case on June 13th, and the city council could hold a public hearing, consider any protest, and then take action to adopt a resolution setting the new rates. And then on July 1st, the new rates would take effect. And so tonight's recommended action is adoption of a resolution directing staff to initiate the property owner notice and protest process as required by Prop 218 for the fiscal year 23, 24 solid waste increase as proposed by Recology San Bruno and recommended by staff. And so with that, I would like to inform the council that there are representatives from Recology here, as well as the Public Works Director and myself. We are all available to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you both for the presentation and report. Any questions from colleagues on the presentation at this time? Seeing, hearing, none. Let's see if there's any members of the public that wish to speak on this topic?
There are no virtual hands raised, and we have no speaker cards.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll bring it back to council for any comments and/or possible action. Folks, it's, it's all on us.
Well, usually when you wait long enough, I'll start talking.
Okay, thank you.
I think there, well, the silence is nobody, nobody wants to raise rates, you know? It's not a thing. It's not a thing that anyone loves to do. But, you know, it's, it's, it's an unfortunate reality that, you know, things, things cost more, and we, and, and as we move through time, and that's going to continue to happen. I, I'm not going to do backflips in, in excitement about supporting this, but I will support it.
Thank you. Councilmember Medina?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not only do people not like paying more for anything, but there's also costs associated with when regulations change, right? And we have to comply. The council negotiated the best rate that we could when we faced a 29% increase. So no one wants to pay more. We're going to, we're going to proceed with the noticing, and that's just unfortunately one of the things about how things work. Things, prices go up, and somebody has to pay. And that's it. It's unfortunate.
Again, thank you for the presentation. I think faced with what we were, and as was already indicated, the increase it was going to be, and the renegotiated contract, which not only had things accountable, quantified, metriced, it also established and solidified to, as we were having at the end of this month, on April 29th, from 9:00 to 11:00 on SNEE, as we've had, drop off for certain products. It's also about the bulky item pickup that the community very much wanted to see, that, which we did a pilot program, not wanting to advertise too much for the concern that could come. But that was also something that was solidified within this agreement. So the, to me, the community did get value and had added. And I think one thing that we do know, I think all of my colleagues would concur, is that as far as Recology is concerned and the service that they provide, I don't hear many, if all, any complaints, with the exception of, I don't want to pay. And, and I'm, I'm right there with you. But at the same time, I think the customer service, I mean, it's gone into persons that bring the garbage cans up, that go the extra mile to be conscientious to the residents and their needs that they have in this community. So no, I would concur, nobody likes this. But for, also with the council, I think, negotiated also added value to what we are receiving. And I'm appreciative for that, and I'm appreciative for the service level that they provide to our community. So hearing and seeing nothing else, is there any action or by colleagues? Is a, adopting a resolution if council chooses?
All right. If we're done with comments through the chair, I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
I second.
Go ahead, Councilmember Alvarez.
Okay. Motion Salazar, Second Alvarez to adopt the resolution under item A of conduct of business. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Five oh, passed unanimously. Resolution is adopted. Thank you again very much. Next, we'll move on to item B, please.
Item 7B. Consider adoption of a resolution authorizing the allocation of $3 million from the general fund, capital reserve fund for the planned San Bruno CityNet services upgrade to fiber technology in recommended areas of San Bruno.
Thank you for reading that. Are we going to, City Manager, are we going to start with their, please?
Thank you, Mayor Medina. Javon Grogan, City Manager. This presentation will be given by Sandeep Krishnamurthy, your CityNet Director. And as you know, CityNet has gone through intensive study, as well as intensive work to write the enterprise financially, as we have continued with a fiber project. And as Sandeep will once again mention today, about 17, 17% of the footprint is fibered. And so we are no longer talking about this as a, launching a fiber to the home project. It's continuing what, what, what we've been doing, knowing that investment in the enterprise is key, critical, and what any municipal utility has to do, or frankly, any, any private utility has to do. And much of what is presented today is really underpinned by the efforts that Sandeep and the team at CityNet have undertaken, as they have done a number of pilot projects and multi-unit buildings, as well as single-family neighborhoods. And the council and the public will know that we, will remember that we did a analysis of the enterprise from an outside third party that the city council received in the la, the latter months of 202022 last year, that really underpinned the work that the, the department is doing, and, and made it clear that to move forward and to continue to serve our customers, investment is critical and needed. What the city council asked for the last time this discussion was before you was for a plan, a rollout schedule, to understand the phases, understand why the first phase was selected. And so that is all presented to you today. And I believe Councilmember Marty Medina has said a number of times, this part of the fiber to the home project has been wanted and needed for some time, but the prevention has been not having the financial resources to move forward. And so we're at a point where the city does have the financial resources to move forward, and we're here to present that tonight. Sandeep?
Well, thank you, City Manager Grogan. I'm Sandeep Krishnamurthy. I'm the Director of San Bruno CityNet Services, here this evening to present a fiber upgrade plan for phases 2.1 and 2.2. And I shall go into what 2.1 and 2.2 stand for during the course of my presentation. Before I begin, I'd like to acknowledge the attendance by CityNet staff who are at the back here. They've made this effort constraining the importance of the presentation we're making this evening. On to slide number two. This is a recap of what City Manager Grogan alluded to as the council had received in the latter part of 2022. The specific date was the 22nd of November, and the city council received and accepted a three-year CityNet fiber upgrade plan. The essence of the plan was an expenditure of $3 million in year one of the upgrade, with $1 million each in years two and three. And this was all accepted by the council, subject to the approval of a detailed plan. So we are here this evening to present the detailed plan, and if approved, these funds would be appropriated from the city's general fund capital reserve. Now the reasons for the upgrade itself for CityNet, this is also in part a recap of the material that the consultant provided to the city council late last year. The current hybrid fiber coaxial infrastructure, otherwise referred to as HFC in the language of the industry, was put in place in San Bruno in 1998. That's 25 years ago. And of course, the performance of this infrastructure has deteriorated over time. And of course, the performance of this infrastructure has deteriorated over time. Uh, over the same period of time, uh, fiber technology has become widely prevalent and widely available and leading to, uh, uh, an obvious move towards that technology in order to provide, uh, better service to the customers of San Bruno CityNet and the residents of San Bruno itself. In addition, uh, there is a software server that powers something called active interdiction taps, which is prevalent as part of the hybrid fiber coaxial infrastructure that currently serves, uh, San Bruno CityNet. This server is so old that there's no replacement for it and were it to fail, uh, large part of the system itself would fail. So, there being no replacement that further pushes CityNet towards looking at a technological, technological upgrade and that upgrade, uh, would be fiber, simply because in today's world with frequent power outages and, uh, uh, generally, uh, tendency to go towards infrastructure that does not require, uh, electric requirements in bulk, uh, fiber kind of wins out yet again. Now, the presentation is titled Fiber Upgrade Phase 2.2 and 2.1 and I just wanted to use this slide to differentiate between upgrade phase 1.0 and upgrade phase 2.0. In 1.0, which is complete, uh, with the approval of council, uh, San Bruno CityNet undertook, uh, the upgrades of three multiple dwelling complexes in the city. And as part of a continued upgrade over the last, uh, two years, uh, San Bruno CityNet undertook four single-family neighborhood upgrades, uh, to, uh, to take on as pilot projects. And these neighborhoods include Marisol, Mirror Luna, Skyline, and, uh, yet to be concluded upgrade in Spyglass and Seagliff. These upgrades, for the most part, have been successful. Uh, the methodology that San Bruno CityNet used for the upgrade, it involved the utilization of hybrid CityNet staff, uh, 70% and contractors, uh, mostly for the backyards, uh, where work was required, up to 30% of the project. CityNet handled the equipment procurement and I'll go into later slides why these points are being highlighted here. Uh, the presentation, tonight's presentation is to focus on fiber upgrades 2.1 and 2.2. Now, the 2.0 phases, which comprise 2.1 and 2.2, involves the demarcation of seven phase areas across the city. And these phase areas, uh, are mostly demarcated following avenues and streets, uh, major avenues and streets across the city. So, if you take a closer look, and I know it's very difficult to do that with the scale of the map on the screen, uh, you will notice the demarcations follow El Camino Real, Sneeath Lane, uh, Skyline, among others. To settle on which area to upgrade first, uh, CityNet employed the following upgrade criteria. And the first was an observation of what's been going on in the recent past, especially over the last three months since Christmas, uh, on where the highest frequency of power and CityNet service outages have been, happened, have been occurring within the city itself. And also, there was an eye towards which aspect of the terrain in San Bruno is the most hilly and is the most tree-covered. And then where is the need for backyard access, uh, for the pole line most required? And when I say the pole line, it is the line followed by the poles that are owned by, uh, AT&amp;T and by PG&E and on which San Bruno CityNet has been a long-term 50-year tenant. And this is the line that has to be followed for laying of, uh, aerial fiber. Finally, the last point CityNet considered in which areas to upgrade first was the proximity to CityNet data centers. Uh, CityNet has two data centers within the city, uh, one in the Rollingwood area and the other by El Camino Real. The plan is to radiate outwards during upgrades, uh, so that the distance from the CityNet, uh, the distance of fiber laid from the CityNet data center, uh, starts off from the closest out to the farthest and it would be a sequential upgrade. So, given what I said in the previous slide, uh, the way the phases have been laid out is, uh, phase 2.1, West of Skyline, and you see listed on the, uh, chart in front of you, uh, the number of homes and the number of poles involved in, uh, the area of West of Skyline. And 2.2 would be Northeast of Skyline, again, uh, homes, poles laid out. So, the total number of homes covered by all the seven phases would, uh, be 9,846. And the total number of poles, which would account for 100% of the poles in the city, is 2,692. Now, while the poles are 100% of the count in the city, the homes are not the same, or the homes are not all 100% of the homes in the city. These are single-family homes. So, the short, uh, summary of this is that San Bruno has 9,846 single-family homes at this point and 2,692 poles and this plan covers both aspects. The breakdown for the city of San Bruno, uh, in terms of a build-out, uh, are the following: 9,846 single-family homes and it includes 264 single-family homes that are previously alluded to as being covered by our pilot projects and of course, 100% of the city is 2,692 poles. San Bruno CityNet has already upgraded with the approval of council in fiber phase 1.0, 2,575 homes in MDUs and these are primarily in three large complexes. Uh, and these were completed in 2018 and 19. The MDUs or the multiple dwelling units not covered by the current upgrade plan, what I'm presenting tonight, as well as the upgrade done previously, totaled 2,280 dwelling units and these are in, uh, complexes which include the crossings, Cherry Village, et cetera. So, what would have to happen to have these homes covered is once the area is upgraded for fiber in terms of the poles covered, a separate plan would have to be drawn up to enter these apartment complexes and fiber them separately. So, the total number of homes, if we add the three rows, uh, that lead the chart, totaled 14,701 and this equals the total number of occupied dwelling units in San Bruno as per the 2020 census. So, the focus of fiber upgrade phases 2.1 and 2.2, based on the criteria we laid out earlier and based on the way we've divided the face or the upgrade phase areas within San Bruno, include the areas west of Skyline and northeast of Skyline. And, uh, the landmarks that are included in these areas are Ponderosa Park, Pacific Heights Park, Portola Park, Monteverde Park, and the Golden Gate National Cemetery. If approved, a list of specific sea, uh, streets will be published on the CityNet website and as the upgrade proceeds, the sta- the status of each of these streets and the upgrade itself would be updated. So, this slide has a detailed breakdown of the fiber upgrade costs, uh, for the west of Skyline. The total here is about 1.5 million and only about 500,000 is for the cost or a little under 500,000 is for the material, the rest is for labor. On this chart, we have a 1.4 million total for the area northeast of Skyline and, uh, the details in the fine print there are all the equipment needed as well, as well as the labor costs. This is a summary slide. Uh, the total equipment and construction cost, uh, for the two areas that are the focus of this presentation, uh, come to 2.936 million. If you recall, uh, 3 million was the ask for year one and a million each for the years following thereafter. So, the work plan, if approved, for fiber upgrades in phases 2.1 and 2.2, uh, would involve equipment purchase by CityNet staff and by the city procurement, uh, office housed within the Department of Finance. Logistics planning would be taken care of by CityNet staff as well as a temporary project manager included within the, uh, within the upgrade plan itself. And the backyard fiber upgrades, uh, would be farmed out to contractors on literally a street-by-street or a multiple-street basis, but not on a product, not for the entirety of the project. And the CityNet project team would also contribute, uh, along with the contractor to do 70% of this. The remaining 30% would be handled by CityNet staff themselves on an as-available basis. And the reason to call this an as-available basis is that we have a business to run on a day-to-day basis and it is as and when staff is, or can be spared from running that business and answering service calls is when we would deploy them to help with the upgrade once it got underway. The way this plan works in terms of pay scales is union pay scales were applied to CityNet temporary project team and staff, uh, and the temporary project team would be of limited duration hired just for the duration of the, uh, build itself for phases 2.1 and 2.2. And staff, of course, is already represented by, uh, unions. The contractor who would be hired would be ad hoc and on a mini-project basis. Uh, the reason for this is, uh, that there's an interspersion of work planned between CityNet staff, temporary project staff hired for the project and, uh, the contractor. And that's movement of those teams would, uh, sort of be in tandem, but not necessarily, uh, able to be planned out well in advance. To summarize, uh, the project plan as we presented today involves one project manager, two technicians, available staff and contractors to be deployed in a hybrid work format. And what we are proposing to upgrade, uh, with your approval today is two phases, phase 2.1 and 2.2, uh, which would be 100% aerial, that means all the upgrade would happen on poles and not underground. And it would involve a total of 567 poles and 2,116 homes in total. The method of the upgrade that, uh, CityNet proposes employing for this upgrade is called overlapping. It's a FCC or a Federal Communications Commission, uh, permitted method and it'll be used to replace hybrid fiber coax cable, uh, with fiber. Every one of the 2,116 homes will be passed by fiber. Every customer will have a fiber drop. So, there's a distinction here. Every home will be passed of the 2,116, but not every one of the 2,116 homes would get a fiber drop right at the outset. Uh, we would do the drops or actually the line that goes from the trunk line to the house to those who actually have CityNet service. Our rollout costs are vastly lower than comparable rollouts for the following reasons. We have an existing business, so we already present in the location. We have our cables up on the poles. We have an experienced team who's already become well-versed in rolling out fiber, having done the pilot projects in the four locations I mentioned earlier to single-family homes, as well as earlier to the multiple dwelling unit complexes. And we also have cost controls put into place for many years now and which we will take forward into the equipment acquisition and deployment phases of the upgrade, if approved. So, essentially, we have a project that's geared for success for a timely on-budget execution, uh, and I'll get into the timeline in just a little bit. So, the timeline we are laying out for this project is, if approved, we would start equipment acquisition between May and December. And the reason for the six-month timeline to acquire the equipment required for the upgrade is because of supply lines. They're only now getting back into shape with several necessary items, including the fiber itself, being in fairly short supply. So, we're allowing for six months between approval and final delivery of all the equipment required for the upgrade. Between September, while the equipment upgrade is underway, and March of next year is when we look at onboarding a contractor, getting a time slot from the contractor for construction to begin, and also onboarding a project manager who would oversee the project on CityNet's behalf. This would be a limited-duration appointment. We, uh, plan on the construction itself happening between December of 2023 and March of 2025. And the reason for such a lengthy deployment is that we have, as I mentioned earlier, a hybrid way of working at the upgrade itself, which will help to control costs, but also which will sort of slow down the process in terms of us not handing out a blanket, uh, contract to just one third-party source and spending a lot more money than we are asking for. We look at bringing onboard fiber technicians, two of whom we would hire to help specifically with construction and work with the contractors we would get onboard for the project as well. These two technicians would be of limited duration again and they would work with, uh, the project manager we would bring onboard, uh, slightly earlier. We look at finishing, uh, the first phase 2.1, the west of Skyline, by, uh, July of 2024 and from then on taking on northeast of Skyline, which we plan to complete by March of 2025. So, this is a rather lengthy timeline, but it calls for pretty much the current supply line situation continuing without much positive change. Uh, if it improves, then we do it faster. That's, uh, as far as the plan goes. So far, the return on investment from fiber investments that have been made in San Bruno, have some interesting stats to, uh, be presented. 18.3% of the city is under fiber right now. So, 18.3% of the San Bruno CityNet footprint is in fiber. Most fibered homes are in multiple dwelling units, about 96%. Only 4% or 264 homes are in single-family areas. The total cost of the fiber installed to date, uh, including the first ones which were done with the council's approval in the three large MDU complexes totaled $2.3 million. And out of, and based on this investment, the annual return that, uh, CityNet, uh, receives as a part of its revenues is 2.2 million. So, pretty handsome rate of return on the initial investment of 2.3 million. Now, out of this 2.2, the question arises as to how much happened as a, because of the fiber upgrade itself. And that number is about 45% of the 2.2 million or 990, 990,000, a little, little under a million dollars a year. So, it's a pretty handsome return overall and, uh, this plan will likely continue, uh, because, uh, fiber simply delivers a better product and has a better, uh, prospect of attracting and retaining subscribers. The revenue upside we expect from the upgrade in phases 2.0, 2.1 and 2.2, uh, are the following. Uh, but just to recap what I mentioned in the previous slide, uh, CityNet currently has 18.3% fiber penetration, but receives 27.5% of its current revenues from fiber-built areas. And while the current average revenue per user is $103, we actually project a decrease in this ARPU, in this average revenue per user over time to 7325. Why is that good for the system? It's good because what it means is our margins will likely improve and we'll have more of internet users as opposed to the current cable television, cable TV, uh, base, which is rather large and planned to go down over time, especially as, as we start moving them from our current cable TV platform to, uh, streaming television platform that has a lower cost to the end subscriber, but a higher margin for the enterprise itself. If we complete the upgrade with this new plan, uh, for fiber phases 2.1 and 2.2, we would end up increasing our current fiber footprint, uh, by 82% to cover about 32% of the system itself. In fiber penetration projections by itself, we anticipate adding about 15% more of subscribers and in terms of revenue, because of improving margins, we would add up to 35%. Hand-in-hand with the fiber upgrade, uh, proposal, we also have, uh, a replacement program for those active interdiction taps I mentioned earlier in the presentation. They're linked to a server which cannot be replaced. So, they could put the system into big trouble if they were, if the server were to fail. So, what we have in place is a way to replace the active taps with passive taps. Act- Active taps require power, passive taps don't. So it's yet another point in favor of replacing those active taps, which are pretty much obsolete at this point with passive. The city has a total of about two thousand four hundred and twenty-five active taps. We have currently begun the replacement. We are about, almost a year and a half or two years into it. We've replaced about seven hundred of the twenty-four, twenty-five taps, and all this replacement has been done by staff. We anticipate accelerating this process as we go forward into the fiber upgrade, so that we have, on the one hand, a fiber upgrade happening in one part of San Bruno, and on the other, a tap replacement program happening on, in the other, just so we end up in a situation as quickly as possible where the system does not go down because of equipment failure of that particular server. The focus of the tap replacements, which would be in phases pretty similar to the fiber upgrade phases we have in the map, would be in the areas not covered by fiber upgrade two point one and two point two. So essentially, we would start in our fiber upgrade phase seven and work our way towards two point one, whereas fiber upgrade phases work its way from two point one through to two point seven. The replacement method we're using is seventy-five percent by staff, and we would look at contracting twenty-five percent out where we would need assistance with backyard tap replacements. And the biggest benefit of the tap replacement program is to maintain operational continuity. So this brings me to the request we have tonight for the council, which is consider the adoption of a resolution to authorize the city manager to allocate three million dollars from the city of San Bruno's general fund, capital reserve fund, to fund the planned San Bruno CityNet services upgrade to fiber technology in designated areas of San Bruno. Brings me to the last slide, and I remain available to answer any questions, or if you have any comments, please feel free.
Thank you very much for the presentation and the detail. At this time, are there any questions from colleagues on the presentation, questions on the presentation? Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I have a few questions, actually. Were all the eighteen percent upgrades that we already completed, were they all installed on the pole or underground?
They are in M D Us, so, I mean, basically, they're along the inside of the buildings. These are, they cover three big complexes, Shelter Creek, Peninsula Place, and Crystal Springs. And, did I get the third right? Yeah. Okay. And once you enter the M D U, I mean, basically, access is via a pole, but once you enter the M D U itself, you're in the building. You're where there are a large number of apartment units, and you have to follow the line of construction within.
So does that mean the poles that, so when you use the term, the term pole, is that the same with the P G N E pole?
Exactly right. It's all on P G N E poles, and we have to follow their pole line.
And, sorry.
Please, finish your.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And also for the pole cost permitting, were they all subjected to P G N E requirements? And where are we pulling the, the permit to the, from the city, from P G N E?
It's from, pole cost permitting is from P G N E and A T and T, who are the joint owners of the poles. And for this, we have a certain amount planned out in the, in the context of the detailed slides that we have provided in this presentation, and we propose getting that permitting process done by a third party, that is a contractor, who would do that for all the poles as the work proceeds for the upgrade.
Thank you. And so when we obtain the permit from A T and T and P G N E, does that mean we're also leasing from them when we put our, our fiber, fiber optic, is that also cable, right?
It's also cable. What, what's involved in this is very precise measurements by the third-party company from pole to pole, and also something called assessment of a wind load factor, because these poles, these wires have some weight and the capability of bearing some weights, and we have to convince the permitting authority, who in this case would be the owners of the poles, that our additional weight is not going to cause issues for the other wires on the pole themselves.
I'm just a little bit concerned because if we are using or upgrading to, to installing it on the pole, and we did our budget initiative, and we, this subject actually came up about moving forward with underground. So, so meaning if we are installing cable on the pole, and I notice on all the, the map, the maps, it's on Skyline and up on the hill, and those are the areas that actually we would like to move forward with underground because of the power outage and for, like, fire hazards. And, and, and so if we, if we were to install them, then, and, and years down the road, we would go under, underground, then what will happen to, to this, this cable? Then we would have to install conduit underground and then put our fiber, fiber cable in there?
Yes, that's a great point. That's exactly right. We would have to go underground in conduit, but we cannot see that happening without P G N E going underground, as well as A T and T going underground. We would be, I would say, further down the line in terms of parties that would be involved in that undergrounding project. While that's an excellent plan to have in place, in terms of fiber builds, the cost would go up exponentially if we were to go underground right from the outset, which would be an excellent path to take. There are certain examples available to hand of such fiber upgrades having happened on an underground basis. A good example would be Fort Collins in Colorado, a town with a population of seventy thousand. The city raised a bond of a hundred and twenty million dollars to get the undergrounding done. And while the area is much larger than San Bruno, we just feel that in our compact area, with aerial having served us well for the last fifty years, it's something that we can go forward with and look at undergrounding in terms of a conduit build-out and in terms of joining P G N E and A T and T and other players who are higher in the order of priority in terms of getting our fiber underground as and when that happens.
Thank you. Last question, sorry. So currently, we have contractors who are helping maintain, I guess, get the calls for, like, if we have any kind of troubleshooting for our customers. So does that mean that the more fiber optic we, we install, the more it will cost the city to, from, from the contractor who will service us?
You mean from the people who help us man our customer call centers after hours?
Correct.
I would actually see a serious decline in the volume of those calls, because what would happen, one of the reasons why we get calls, in fact, the primary driver of why we get calls are outages, troubles, basically with the service, either with CityNet services or with the general area outage affecting CityNet services. And the primary reason in the recent past has been the number of electric outages that impact our equipment and therefore impact services. With fiber, what happens is the primary points of electric power being supplied to the fiber circuit is at the head-end, which is supported by generator-powered electricity, so there's a backup always available, and at the customer's home, where the customer can notice it right away, because their power would likely be out as well. So that's why they're not getting the service they need to power their modem, but there's actually no other electric point anywhere in the path. So that is one of the primary benefits of going to cable. So that would, in all probability, lead to a big decline in the number of calls coming into the call center itself.
But it doesn't mean that we will not, we will get rid of the, the?
No, we won't. We will, we have to have some kind of customer service available, because our plant is a twenty-four-by-seven-by-three-sixty-five plant. We cannot not have customer support available at all times of the day or night.
Thank you.
City Manager Grugan?
Yeah. Please. Thank you, Mayor Medina. I just want to circle back to a couple of questions that council member Alvarez asked. One is the discussion that we had with the city council about undergrounding. And so the city currently has six million dollars' worth of Rule Twenty-Eight undergrounding credits with P G N E. The city has set up a undergrounding district that essentially, or more or less goes from El Camino Real along Crystal, on Crystal Springs from El Camino Real to Donner. To underground just that section will be quite a bit more than, than six million dollars. And so we were going to look at shortening the distance. However, based on council discussion at the retreat, we are going to look for other areas where we can apply those six million dollars to. That will be a very small area. I don't want to quote off the top exactly what an undergrounding will cost, but they're very, very expensive projects. And so, based on council direction, we will look to, for an area where we can put that six million to work and return to council. But a large-scale undergrounding project led by the city of San Bruno is unfortunately out of the city's financial resources to do. That said, as with our current coaxial cables or fiber, if there is a undergrounding project in the future led by P G N E or A T and T, we would partner in that, whether we have the fiber or the coax, and put them underground at that time. When that occurs, when the funds may occur for that, is really a TBD, but probably several, several years away, if not decades, just given the, the cost of undergrounding. And then one of the other questions that councilwoman Alvarez asked is, have any of the current fiber pilot projects that we've done been underground? And I think there have been, so I want you to talk about that.
Yes, I'd like to add a couple of points to that, Councilmember Alvarez. The two pilot projects we picked, actually, three of the four, Marisol, Mirror Luna, and Spyglass Sea Cliff are all underground. The reason we picked those areas is because they had underground conduit, and we could lay it almost in a futuristic or future-oriented fashion there and have it as desired. That would be our desire as well, wherever possible, to actually go underground and put it in a, in a way that does not make it suspect to the elements, to the weather. That said, in all new developments that we are undertaking within the city of San Bruno, we have a requirement as part of the planning process itself to require conduit provided by the developer for our cables to reach homes.
I'm sorry, when you say provided, is that we're leasing or we're owning the conduit?
We own the conduit.
We own it?
Yeah. We own the conduit.
Thank you.
Other questions on the presentation from colleagues, Vice Mayor?
Thank you for the presentation. I've got a, have a few questions. I'll just go in order as they appeared in the, in the presentation. So when we talk about the, you had a slide on the initial upgrade criteria, you know, how we picked the, the different phases and laying it all out there. This is something that we discussed during the retreat, and I think it, I think it, we should bring it up here, and I just want to confirm, was one of the other reasons that, in addition to all the ones that were listed, that we chose on focusing on bringing fiber to the extreme western ends of the, of the city, was the potential for being able to then extend fiber to the coast, because we know that there's, that there is a desire in Pacifica for, for greater capacity, and that's a potential revenue stream for us.
Exactly right. And we would substantially accomplish that, the ability to touch the border of Pacifica with the completion of the Spyglass project, which we already have underway. So to a certain extent, that side of the city, or that side of the, of a potential extension has, is already paved. Now, to go to the other side, to South San Francisco, once we complete the area close to the Golden Gate National Cemetery and that particular neighborhood, we would again be in a position to extend into that part of South San Francisco itself.
Great, thank you. So now, talking about timelines, I mean, you know, it, it's a very extended timeline, so it's, you know, everybody wants things to go faster than they can. But one question that I have regarding the timeline and how this, how these projects work, as fiber progresses through a particular neighborhood, do, do, do the, do the homes that are getting passed incrementally get new service, or is it you do the whole, the whole project and then everybody gets turned on at once? Or is, so I'm just wanting to see?
I would suggest there are some, there are some milestones within those areas. So it's not like we'd have to do a hundred percent, but we'd have to do a substantial amount, because we'd have to install electronics or junction boxes or something to that effect somewhere along the pathway. And once that milestone is hit, is when we could start serving the homes that have been passed to that point.
Okay, thank you. And then, last question, this is going back to the, the R O I and, and all of that, the numbers that you're getting from those homes that, that already have fiber after the pilot program. Are we receiving positive feedback from the, from those households that are benefiting from fiber? And do we have any data to measure whether we have greater customer retention in that population of folks versus the, the CityNet base as a whole?
Yeah, I can break the response down into, I suppose, a number of sub-points. The first one being calls received. On average, we get about, we're doing about eight hundred calls a month, out of which we track about six hundred. So the remaining around two hundred, we don't quite know where they're from. But of the six hundred that are tracked, about five sixty to five seventy are from non-fiber customers. It's just forty to fifty that are from fiber customers. So it's almost like a ninety-ten split. But then, in all honesty, the footprint covered by fiber is smaller.
Right. I was gonna say, are we, are we probably ninety-ten on?
No, we are eighteen eighty-two.
Oh, eighteen, that's right.
Yeah.
You gave us that number, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's slightly?
It's slightly better. So the number of calls we receive. And then the second aspect is, a lot of the calls are for television service and not for the internet.
Okay.
In terms of services. So that's calls. You had a separate point about?
Just, do, do we have any, do we have any numbers on, you know, customer retention? Because I know that, you know?
Yeah, we've been fairly steady in the M D Us. I mean, I won't speak to the single-family homes yet because it's so new. The sales only started late last year in these fiber-upgraded neighborhoods with single-family homes. But in the M D Us, our retention has been excellent. We have not seen much of a decrease from the sixty-five percent-plus penetration that we had early on through to the current time, and we are talking about two and a half years' worth of data.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Good for now.
Other, Councilmember Medina?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I also want to commend staff. I had an, had an outage at my home for some reason, and as soon as the service call came in, the service was restored. Probably the first time in, I don't know, fifteen years I had an issue where I needed to make a call for service, so I wanted to acknowledge that. In your presentation, you, you covered homes, but what's the idea for businesses?
That's an excellent question, thank you. For businesses, well, first of all, I'd like to make one pertinent comment, I think. We are actually starting to see a rise in the number of businesses calling us for service. And one of the explanations probably is that other providers have started charging very high rates of service, and so we are becoming the default option. They're starting to call us in greater numbers than they have even in my past here, which is not as long as many others. So that said, what are we doing to target businesses? The way we look at occupied dwellings in San, in San Bruno is, as a whole, for the whole city, so it would cover the businesses also. But generally speaking, when it comes to addressing a specific business, we have a way of going about it where we ask them to fill out an application, we do a service call, and we do a site feasibility analysis, basically, at the very outset before we serve that particular business. Because in most cases, businesses fall into some broad buckets. You have either less than twenty employees or twenty to a hundred employees or a hundred plus employees. So the requirements could vary quite considerably, which is why we do it on a more customized basis as having, as opposed to having it as part of a broader rollout plan. But to answer your specific point, they would be covered, even if you cover all the poles in the city, it's then a question of installing the drop to that particular business for fiber, so that's how they would get covered.
Right, understood, but that's? Right, understood, but that's not what, that's not the focus right now. We're focusing on 2.1 and 2.2.
Two, which are single-family homes.
On the west side?
On the west side.
Okay. I was just curious, I understand why, starting on that side, what type of survey or customer interaction, potential customer interaction has been done to kind of determine the interest in fiber? And what price point are we speculating to have to compete with?
Okay, let us the second part first, our competition. The general price for 1 gigabit fiber is $119 a month from AT&amp;T. Our current offering is packed at, for internet, only 1 gigabit at $70. I don't anticipate us raising rates much.
One more time, I'm sorry.
We charge $70 a month.
$70 a month?
Yeah, $70.
Right.
For 1 gigabit fiber only. And then, we go downwards, depending on the tier of service that's chosen. We don't anticipate raising rates much on the internet side of things. On the television side, where we are just a middleman, whether now or going into the future, we are pretty much at the mercy of service providers who keep increasing rates on a regular basis on us. And we're going to be forced to increase those rates as and when they're raised on us. But even then, the attempt is to keep it below market.
They always offer the tempt, the tempting rate to get you hooked, and then they eventually.
Absolutely, that's what the competition does. We, by the way, do not do that. We don't have a contract, and we do not do promotions of limited duration. What we have is one single promotion, which is, sign up for internet service with us, 2 months are free. The first 2 months are free, and it's a rolling promotion. So, if you were to sign up 6 months from now, you'd still get a 2-month offer, provided you're a new customer.
Got it. So, in your slide where you're showing the 3 primary areas where we have the fiber installed, the penetration, penetration rates range from 52 to 75. I was wondering if you thought why that range is so wide? And, I mean, 52 is on the lower side, and 75 obviously is on the higher side. So, what, why is, why are they, what's your opinion on why they're different? And what should we be doing to increase our penetration rate at the lower end?
You are talking about the fiber penetrations, right?
Yes.
And the reason for that is fairly straightforward. Some buildings have given us an exclusive right of access, some people, and some buildings have not. Where we haven't, and we have to compete for customers with perhaps somebody else, competitor, having a better right of access to those homes, our penetration level is lower.
Okay, it seems like that cost, though, would be there if it was $40 a month, it would be, so they don't have? I guess I'm not understanding, so we have access to the majority of 90-plus percent at each of those residences? But, where, I don't, I guess I don't understand the answer.
Okay, let me take a step back.
Sure.
Maybe have you re-asked me the question?
Right, so, our penetration rate, I believe at, I'm going to use pull the presentation, what page is that on? Yes, it's 52%, 52% at Crystal Springs, and it's 75% at Shelter Creek. What are we doing to try to?
Oh, specifically speaking of these apartment complexes, we did do a campaign to, we circulated postcards, had it delivered to each apartment within the postcards, and it was more informational in the sense we were letting them know they could get 2 months free if they signed up with us. But we know that in Crystal Springs, we do not have as easy, I'm sorry?
Don't have exclusive rights there either.
Yeah, we don't have it.
Right, right, okay. Just, I'm sorry, a couple, a couple more, fiber's pretty important. So, there was some discussion in the past about utilizing abandoned water mains as a potential way of conduit on the east side of town. Is that still a valid option, or what's going on there?
We could, but some initial research has revealed that the depths at which fiber is undergrounded via conduit versus the depth of the water pipe are sort of different, and I forget the exact depth.
Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry. I very much apologize. What I would ask, if, and again, your information and knowledge is important to us, and I hope this doesn't put you on an awkward spot, could you come up to the mic? Only because people who are listening, they won't hear you, or if they come back to watch it, and I apologize, but.
My apologies as well, Mayor.
No, no.
This is Rob McGill, he's City Net, City Net's technical manager, and he has much greater depth of knowledge in this area than I do.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. There are 2 different levels, so communication lines are usually 36 to 48 inches below surface level. Sewer and water is much lower, so we wouldn't be able to be on that same plane. So, it's not something that we would be able to use.
Okay, no, that's fine, I remember we talked about it, I just haven't heard an update, which kind of brings to the.
Thank you, Rob.
Yeah, thank you. To my next question is, there are num, there is an independent contractor installing fiber across San Bruno, and like right now, they're working up San Bruno Avenue. So, that brings the idea of, or my concern about competition, and how quickly they're moving, and how we're trying to chase. That's just my opinion. Have there, what do, I just wanted, what do you think about, they're going to be putting fiber in? And we're talking about taking years to get the fiber in. So, this is, I'm concerned about the competition and how we're moving on a slower pace.
Your concern is valid. I mean, first of all, let me start by saying that, yes, there is competition. But, there are various types of fiber construction going on around us. A lot of the fiber construction that we have found is not so much geared at providing services to San Bruno residents in the form that we do, which is through wired internet access, or it's mostly to provide backhaul for 5G, for 5G cellphone services. And these contractors are doing it at the behest of companies like Crown Castle, who operate cellphone towers, among other things, in this area, as well as the bigger telecom companies such as AT&amp;T, Verizon, and T-Mobile. So, they're doing it more to, to build the backhaul parts of their cellphone businesses than they are to compete with San Bruno City Net or for customers in the City of San Bruno. So, that's one level. The second level is, when it comes to a few providers that actually are competing, we are aware of a few such operating on the edges of the town, which include companies like Sonic and Rogue broadband, and I believe a couple of others whose names escape me. But these are in addition to AT&amp;T, who's by far the biggest competitor. Have they, AT&amp;T has already swept through the town and done the amount of fibering that they're going to do. To a certain extent, the answer is yes, we're going to be chasing after people who are doing it seemingly on a faster pace. But on the other hand, what we have also found over time is there's a lot of neighborhoods in San Bruno who'll be sort of left behind by these fibers, because they tend to go more along the main avenues and the main trunk routes through the city, as opposed to the neighborhoods that comprise the city itself.
Right, and these contractors are installing numerous conduits. Is there a potential that we slide our fiber in the conduit, or lease part of that? Or, I mean, just curious, it's already in the ground, like they're, they're.
We would love to, but the whole.
There's a cost, of course, with that.
Yeah, of course, there's a big cost.
It weighing the cost, and the costs and the speed, right? So, we're starting this project next, the following, next year.
No, we have, I'm being very careful in saying, okay, even if I got your approval today, and we started tomorrow, at the outset, I'm looking at 6 months, given the supply chain and where things are starting. Now, if it happens in 3 months, we'll be the happiest people in the world and move forward much faster. But, we just want to be careful and say, okay, we want to make a commitment to a timeline that we can stand by.
No, I appreciate your honesty with that. My last question, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, no, that's fine.
And I have my comments later.
I'm gonna call on the City Manager after.
Sure. So, I'm aware, and I think the council's aware, that when new developments come online, that we, we have the agreement to have the conduits installed. There are a number of projects, developments that are planned in San Bruno, and how will these projects affect the schedule? Does City Net pull, contract pull the fiber through there? I think that's what, that's the first question.
Yes, well, the developer puts in the conduit, per the plan they develop with the city's planning department. And then, we go and populate the conduit itself, we pull fiber through that. For the most part, we have seen areas including Miraluna, the newest neighborhood, and the one in Skyla and the condominium complex, it did not take too much time.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to, just to check in with that. And, Mr. Mayor, those are my questions, thank you very much for your answers.
Thank you, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. In response to Councilmember Medina's question, I just want to ask the director to highlight the importance of fiber, because fiber is really important for 2 reasons. One is to increase the bandwidth, but also to improve the backbone infrastructure of the system. And so, I think oftentimes, when we talk about fiber to the home or bringing fiber, it's like, we need 1 gigabit. Most of the homes in our footprint actually don't need 1 gigabit, right? Many of us, many employees live in the city, myself one, tons of internet bandwidth. We have problems because of the backbone infrastructure, not because we need more bandwidth. And I just want to ask Sandeep to expound upon that point a little bit.
Yeah, a lot of the backbone infrastructure that City Manager Grogan just alluded to is based on fairly obsolete technology. It's, we have a cable plant that badly needs replacement with something better. We have internet, we have bandwidth going out to homes that are largely occupied by the old cable TV plant, so, which needs to be cycled out, and something else needs to be put in its place. What fiber will do is give us that extra bandwidth to get out to customers' homes, but on top of that, we would layer in something new like streaming television that would actually take away the need for cable TV bandwidth and free up more for our customers' use. To City Manager Grogan's last point, that people don't actually need to use the entire 1 gigabit, even if they had it available, he's probably right. You could do a lot of streaming even with what we have currently in place, except that we do have frequent outages because of, again, the old obsolete infrastructure that we need to replace with less power-driven infrastructure that fiber promises to bring.
Just a quick point through the mayor, to help underscore that, that point.
And Vice Mayor?
You know, obviously, I'm a customer. Throughout this winter, I've had several internet outages. 100% of the time, it's because, if my power's on and my internet's out, 100% of the time, it's because the power's out nearby.
Yes.
And, you know, and that's out of, that's out of our control, and that's also, just to reiterate, that's something that would not happen with fiber, because that's being powered at the head and not.
At the head end, which has a generator, which backed up by a generator, so it wouldn't necessarily go out. The only other place which would have power which might go out is right at your home.
Right, of course, if the power's out, your internet's out.
Whereas, at the current time, what happens is you might have a tap or something else in the daisy chain that links everything to your house, go out 3 streets from yours, and you're sitting there wondering, how come my power's on but that service is out?
I've gotten good at reading the PG&E outage map, and usually when the internet goes out, I know that there's, there's got to be a power outage on Princeton, because that's where, that's usually where it goes out, where it cuts my internet off. So, it's, it's good to know that, you know, moving to this is going to eliminate those types of outages. Great, thank you.
Thank you for your patience, Mr. Salazar, Councilmember.
I have a few questions, thank you. For starters, let me go back to Slide 16, if we could. And I wanted to dig in a little deeper on a statement that's there on the side that said that subscribers generate 2.2 million. Revenue is 0.9 million in post-fiber revenue growth. I wanted to dig in a little deeper into that statement. So, are we saying that close to $1 million is generated by fiber customers? Or that in the period since fiber was introduced, revenue has increased by 0.9?
Yes, the second part. In the period since fiber was introduced, the revenues on a yearly basis have gone up by that much.
Okay, so it's not to say that fiber increased the revenue, because there was also other programs.
There was other revenues to begin with.
Cost adjustments or pricing that was changed.
Exactly.
To try to make it more profitable, so it's not all due to.
Yeah, it's not uniquely attributable just to fiber, but fiber's a large part of it. I mean, that's the, that's the, I suppose, a reasonable assumption to make, because if not, we should have seen a mild rise on the 1-point-some million dollars that we would have been making prior to fiber being installed. We should have, it should have gone up to 1.5 maybe, or 1.6 million. And instead, we've seen a fairly substantial jump from 1.2 or 3 million to about 2.2.
Okay, okay. And it seems like, even in spite of that impressive jump, we continue to struggle and.
Well, the one point I'd point to here is that still accounts for only 18.3% of the footprint. We still have 82%, almost 82%, that's not covered by a fiber upgrade.
Yes.
So, which is part of the reason for us to come with this proposal and strongly suggest that we get the funding to upgrade the service in other parts of the city, finances allowing us to do it.
And also not reflected in that statement is the fact that also our expenses have increased considerably.
Our expenses have increased. To a certain extent, we managed to moderate those increases through renegotiation of contracts, through dropping certain services, through holding the line on even headcount. We've actually not even added, we've let attrition through retirement happen and not added those people back in, not just for this reason, not just to control costs, but also because the strategy of the enterprise is changing, and the focus of the enterprise is changing, from its previous television-oriented focus through to its current internet and future internet plus streaming TV focus. So, till such time, we understand that better. We don't propose bringing back headcount, which adds dollars and cost to the bottom line. So, among, these are amongst a range of initiatives that are allowing us to control costs, but essentially, to answer your question, yes, you're right, costs have gone up substantially.
Yeah, and I will acknowledge that you've done an amazing job with both controlling costs and improving our revenue overall with, with what we do have, so, so thank you for that. That hasn't gotten unnoticed. It may have been somewhere in the staff reporter in the presentation, maybe I missed it, but do we have an estimated profitability per customer for a fiber customer versus a traditional coax customer?
I can give you a number, but the, it's still what I call a masked number, because it's not broken out for fiber. What's happening is, we have multiple levels of movement happening between products and customers, and customers in fiber areas versus non-fiber areas. The profitability of a fiber customer is not necessarily that different from the profitability of a, of a non-fiber customer at this point in time, because the bulk of the revenue driver that we have in place is television, as of today. We have yet to switch out the cable TV plant, and that is not a profitable business. It is barely break-even at best, even after all the efforts were put into place. If I had to speculate on who's more profitable, by far, it would be the fiber customer, simply because the amount of upkeep needed to keep a fiber customer going on with the service or retaining the service is far lower for the enterprise than is the case for a non-fiber customer.
Okay, that makes sense. And so, along the same lines, and I'm trying to think about profitability here, and, you know, how we, how we get to a point where we're, we're not losing money anymore. And I had questions about how the areas were prioritized, the venue project areas. And you spoke about outages and, you know, looking at certain geographical criteria and establishing that those were high-risk areas that would be prioritized. But I think I would have looked at it a little differently in terms of, you know, where do we have a larger footprint, and are there, is there a potential within those areas to have people upgrade? So, meaning, if we make the investment, will we get a return on that investment? And if we're strictly looking at geography as a predictor of where it might be best deployed, I think we're kind of missing the bigger picture about, are we making a wise investment? Or are we just putting it out there?
To address that, I'd like. To address that, I'd like to extend a couple of the points which I did not cover in the text of the slide. When I mentioned that we are looking at the hilly nature of the terrain and the tree-covered aspect of the terrain, the subtext there is our competitors have chosen not to upgrade those areas for the very reason that we chose to do it. So we're picking the area of highest challenge as also being the area of highest potential from a return point of view. So we are quite aware that once we spend the money, the pressure is going to be on us to generate the ROI right out the gate because we would have spent the money and then we have 3 million further to show in the red on our books and we better start adding it back in terms of subscriptions. So one of the unspoken parts of that slide is the notion or our understanding that there's less competition in those areas for subscribers and therefore our process of conversion of upgraded subscribers from being a non-subscriber to a subscriber should be better than average.
And in terms of, you know, we talked about the, making the backbone more robust and, clearly having a non, a passive system in place would have benefits. But in areas that are high-wind areas and areas that are subject to trees toppling over or trees interfering with the lines, would necessary, would aerial fiber necessarily be more robust than aerial copper in those situations? And I mean, my understanding that the glass that's in, in these fibers strands are, is actually more fragile than, than a copper strand.
I don't know about fragile. I mean, so long as they're up and it's working, things are fine. If a tree were to fall right across a line, it doesn't really matter whether it's a PG&E line or a AT&amp;T line or a CityNet line, it would just go out anyway. So there's always that aspect. The other aspect is how we plan our construction itself. They're more or less planned in the form of loops. And so even if one part were to get stuck down, the theory is the other side of the loop would continue with services and you won't necessarily get cut off completely. So it's not just one straight line going down a road. It's actually a loop that comes back to the data center at some point.
And so we would be basically providing fully redundant fiber then to every home?
A certain level of redundancy because if the, let's say you have a drop coming from a trunk line to your house and a tree falls across that drop, well, you're out of luck. I mean, until somebody comes and actually repairs that fiber. But if it happens on a trunk line, that is something going down a boulevard or an avenue or a road and they were, a tree were to fall on one part of the trunk, the theory is that on the other side of the trunk line, you would still have service because it's serviced from a different direction.
Okay.
From the other side of the loop.
So are our current deployments then do have redundancy built into them?
They do, they do. We do have a fiber ring around the whole city and it allows us to keep services for the most part up and running, but then an outage is an outage. When an outage happens, you're just out.
Okay, thank you. Let me see. And I think you, you addressed this already, but in the, the multifamily dwellings that we've, that we're operating in, I, I think when we approved Shelter Creek, we were sort of in a hurry to get in there first because they had an offer from another company to come in and so we sped it up so that we could get in there first. But it sounds like in the other locations, we're not the sole provider?
No, we are not. In fact, Crystal Springs, if memory serves me right, we are clearly not. The, per our understanding, the owner owns multiple such properties in various geographies and has a master deal with a competitor. So we are clearly not in the driver's seat there.
Okay. And of our fiber customers, do we know what percentage of those customers opt for the full 1 gigabit service or how many pay for a slower version?
To City Manager Grogan's point, the vast majority of fiber-built customers do not opt for 1 gigabit service. We have about 30% who opt for that. It's 70% who opt for 100 to 300 Mbps packages.
So typically comparable to, to COEX.
It's comparable to COEX in terms of the product here, but they're getting a vastly better service simply because of the technology that's.
Right.
Feeding it to them.
Right. But to the consumer, if they feel that they're getting the, they're, they're getting what they need, they're not necessarily gonna.
Yeah, they're getting what they need because you've got to remember on fiber, everything that you're buying, let's say you're buying 100 Mbps service, you're getting a symmetric service. So it's 100 Mbps downstream and 100 Mbps upstream. Your Zoom calls are going to work just fine and your streaming's going to work just fine and your gaming's going to work just fine. So why pay for more would, I suppose, be the logic for most of the people.
Right.
But then there are enough very heavy-duty users who have thick lines on their, from their workplace, which they access from home. So those are the people who would not take a chance and would still upgrade.
Right, yeah. And likely those people get compensated by their employer for the services.
Probably do.
It doesn't come out of their pocket. Okay, and I'm, I'm looking toward, you know, the marketability of this and, you know, how, you know, can we make a compelling case for this if we were to put it out there? You know? So that's definitely a consideration. Let me see. I think that was it for my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
One quick follow-up. Vice Mayor.
You mentioned the, the situation at Crystal Springs Terrace, that there, that the owner, you know, was, you know, a partner in other, in other properties and whatever. My understanding is that Crystal Springs sold recently, so I don't know if there's, if that landscape has changed. Maybe that'll help.
Yes, it certainly would help. We would have to make some new inquiries and get behind that. We are aware of one other property that recently sold.
Right.
Where the landscape has distinctly changed and we have a new opportunity developing there as well.
And I would be remiss in, in not mentioning that it sold for $188 million and we received no taxes for that.
Okay, let's stick to the topic, please. With that said, let's see if there's any members of the public.
There are no virtual hands raised and we have no speaker cards.
Thank you. If we can keep to the topic, I'll bring it back to colleagues and see if there's comments, which I'm sure there are.
Mr. Mayor.
On some Alvarez.
Am I allowed to still ask questions?
Yeah. If there's something that came up? Sure, others have.
So circling back on what you mentioned earlier and looking at the AT&amp;T San Bruno website, AT&amp;T website that they offer here in San Bruno, which is 5 gigabyte? Oh, I'm sorry, was that the right term?
1 gigabit.
Yeah, 1 gigabyte and 5, and then we offer 1 gigabyte, right? So what would it take San Bruno to be on that level and how long would it take San Bruno to be even on a 3 gigabyte?
Oh, okay. That is actually fairly simple because once you have the fiber built out, it's a question of changing electronics. So to go from 1 to 10 is not much of a jump. The real issue is how much of a market is there for that 10 gigabit or the 5 gigabit? If you're, if it's a dense business area, it kind of makes sense for a business to have a 10 gigabit service. But for most individual customers, much of their needs are served pretty well, even in the sub-1 gigabit level. So if you can have a competitively or well-priced offer out there, even at the 1 gigabit level, should be good. For the time being, there could be a time in the future where, you know, you migrate the electronics on the same fiber pathway that you built without adding any new fiber to 10 gigabits as well. This system would allow us to do it.
Mr. Mayor, if I.
Sorry, I'm, I'm trying to under.
Okay, let's see if the City Manager can.
Yeah.
Add to that.
Sure. Councilwoman Alvarez, I'm going to ask the Director because how I interpreted your question was 5G compared to 1 gigabit service? And I think they're.
Oh.
Two different types of services.
Did you say 5? Okay, I apologize. I heard it as 5 gig.
Yeah, 5G and 1G.
Yeah.
And basically, I, I, I have a follow-up question that relates to that. You mentioned that we upgraded 18% and it's still we offer 1 gig.
Sure.
Okay.
Let me, I'm going to ask the Director to explain the difference between 5G and 1 gigabit service and the, clarify the answer that you just gave, which I understood to be the difference between fiber allows you to do 1 gigabit or 10 gigabit, which is distinctly different.
I misunderstood your question. I heard it as, explain the difference between a 10 gigabit service that's potentially being offered by some people in ads that you can see on national TV, including AT&amp;T and Comcast, and 1 gigabit that we would go for in terms of wired internet access. What you're talking about to go from City Manager Grogan's comment is that you're asking for the difference between 5G cellular technology and 1G wired or 1 gigabit wired internet technology. These are two completely separate things. 5G is the latest generation of cellular transmission and reception by customers and it, it replaces the 4G standard and the 3G standards that we've had in place in the past on cellphones and smartphones and what have you, wireless devices. What we have in place is a wired access service that we have to physically wire to get our service out to people and they get traffic measured by gigabits. So 5G is gigahertz and 1G is gigabits. These are two slightly, these are two completely different things.
So what you mentioned earlier was 1, 1G that we offer and then.
1 gigabit.
1 gigabit?
Gigabit.
Gigabit?
Yeah.
And then AT&amp;T is 5 gigabit?
Well, AT&amp;T has a 5G level of cellular service and they also offer wired access through their fiber, you know, build-outs in various parts of the city that at, if you were to believe the national advertising, they say we are capable of offering even 10 gigabit service on that same wired access. So they have two levels of service. They do have a cellphone program, which is vast and huge and covers the entire country, and they do have wired access that they sell to customers here in San Bruno.
Which is only cellphone and internet?
They sell cellphone, internet. These days, they do not sell television anymore because they spun off Warner Media. It's now part of Discovery. It's part of that separate group of companies. So I think they represent the sales of that, they're a reseller, but they don't necessarily own it.
Thank you.
Any comments from colleagues? There are no other comments from any colleagues on this topic than the question. I'm sorry. Oh, I didn't hear. Councilmember Medina.
I was trying to put them together.
Sure, sure.
So I'm going to summarize my concerns, right? And where we're at today, looking back where we were. The council was told a number of years ago, we hired our consultant, the consultant came in and said, either you proceed with fiber or you get out of the business. I think that most people remember that. We then decided, okay, we know that. Well, we had, we had staff put together a financial plan and it's like, okay, it looks good in those, in that year, and I don't recall the year at this, at this moment, but we didn't have the funds and we didn't have a funding plan. So fast forward to today, we have a plan. We have some funds to proceed with the first two of seven phases. My concern is, are we going to be competitive going forward? And so I'm skeptical because we're, 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 we are arriving late to the party. That the competition is out there, it's fierce, they're well-backed by big-time money that we don't have. So City Manager Grogan was correct in, in mentioning that my interest in expanding in San Bruno, I have that. I just am concerned about how we're going to compete. So I, without seeing a revised financial plan, right, because we haven't done a revised plan, and then also understanding that since we did that plan, we have been advised of the costs that if we were to obtain the services of internet capability, fiber for the city, there's a certain cost of that. So it's, my concern is I don't have the full picture of, of looking at the financial analysis, an updated financial analysis and the cash flow that we're going to be going forward. And where are we going to be after we get this first phase in? And that it's going to take us many more years unless we proceed quicker, which is with the additional funding that, that is needed to do that. So those are my comments. And I'm, I'm yet undecided. I, we have a large balance of funds to, that we have to eventually pay back to our general fund. So I'll leave it at that for now and just wanted to hear what my colleagues think because I think a lot of them have been here to hear this plan that we're trying to achieve or to make and achieve of providing fiber to our, our residents. So those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Medina. Other, Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree, I share with Councilmember Marty Medina's concern. I'm also adamant about moving forward with the fiber because we have been playing catch-up and this is just the beginning of the request to fund and taken out of our general reserve fund. And we are only on the second out of the seventh phase of this project and that's why I am, like I said, share, I share Councilmember Medina's concern, Marty Medina's concern.
Councilmember Salazar.
And I think I'll be third on, on that bandwagon. I, I also have concerns at this point and one thing that was mentioned that, that really caught my attention was the fact that we, we need to make major improvements to the plan as a whole, not even talking about fiber, but everything that's, that's in the head end. And, and there's a whole, I mean, we were presented with a number of different options at the last study session in November and, you know, there were some options there that included making changes. There wasn't, I was flipping through the slides again to refresh my memory, it wasn't immediately apparent what some of those changes would be that would lead us to profitability. But there was an option to, you know, whether we would issue debt to help fund this, if we would not issue debt. None of the scenarios looked really great to me at the time and so I really do think that we need a larger analysis that takes into account all of the investments that we're going to have to make over the next 10 years before we can decide on whether we want to make more of an investment. And I really do have a concern about taking this funding from our, our capital, our capital fund. I mean, I think 2 million was already committed earlier today and this would be another 3. And I know that there are competing projects. So I'd also like to see what the opportunity cost is of going this route versus investing in some other infrastructure. You know, if it was clearly a revenue generator, I would say, yes, let's make the investment and get that return. I'm not convinced that that's going to happen and so I'd want to approach this a little more cautiously and make sure that, you know, we're making the right investment at the right time.
Any other comments from colleagues? Hearing, seeing none? I think, I think everybody's had a chance, who would at least want to want? Okay. I was going to say I joined the concern list.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, it's hard not to be concerned. And I guess, I guess the question would be is, you know, can we get an updated financial analysis to help back this up?
Yeah, and, and, and I don't want to repeat what everybody else is saying, but, but I think, I want to say, and please disagree with me, it's, it's not, the concern is just looking at the totality, the, the whole situation that we've had, that we're in, that we've, we've dialogued about. By, by no means is it saying anything about the service, is it saying it about the organization, is it saying it about not wanting to.
is it saying it about not wanting to be able to compete and have the fiber go faster and quicker? And yes, there's some catch-up, and the general fund reserves too are something that the Councilmember Salazar said that was on my mind too, but maybe, I don't know, City Manager, want me to turn that? I'm sorry to put all that on you here this evening, but please.
No bones about it, this is a hard decision, one that in my tenure, five-year tenure here, we've been talking about since I interviewed for the City Manager's job, of where's city cable, San Bruno cable going? I started one day in Sandeep, started two weeks later, and we undertook an in-depth study of the enterprise and really concluded and presented to council at that time, and I think it was either late 2018 or late 2019, that there is a public good to a municipal internet enterprise, one. Two, we're in a couple lines of business, cable TV, internet, and telephone. And telephone is VoIP, so it's essentially the internet business. And the enterprise really needs to shift from a cable-centric business to an internet-centric business. And then the other prong is, is there a vision for the future? And we concluded with that, that absolutely there is, but that vision is underpinned by fiber for various reasons. One, because it's future-proof in being able to provide 1 gigabit, 5 gigabit, or 10. But it also solves the, if I can, lack of a better term, the historic problem of CityNet, which is investment in the capital infrastructure that has not happened over decades. And so fiber would improve that, and it, one, provides, yes, more bandwidth for people that want to consume or need to consume more internet, but it also maintains the city's ability to service customers. I think what was true then and what is true now is we are the largest cable and internet provider for residents and businesses in San Bruno, the single largest. That remains true today, it was true then. What the analysis that the outside consultant said is, you're in a business and there are financial challenges with the state of the enterprise. Yes, there's a deficit because the city spent several years where rates didn't increase commensurate to cost, and we've changed that, and we've implemented new rate cards and have larger profit margins, but there is a hole. And I think we've said before, what do you do when you find yourself in a hole, you stop digging. And that was the first thing we did, is we really stopped digging. When Sandeep started, the enterprise was losing about $1 million a year. It's pretty much breaking even. Absolutely, it's been hampered by COVID, but we essentially stopped digging the hole, and now we're trying to figure out the path forward. So totally understand and respect the concerns and comments that have been raised. And certainly, the organization, you know, post my tenure here, can come back and bring a number of additional analysis and information to the council. Certainly, we looked at the debt options. The debt options essentially call for the full faith and credit of the general fund to be pledged, and the thought was to begin and essentially continue small upgrades based on the success of the past upgrades and make additional revenue to, at some point, self-fund. And so we did not present all of those financials, but I know Sandeep has them, and when he comes back, he can provide those. Certainly, everyone wants to go faster. I do think that it would be worth, when the organization comes back, to provide some information on actually what is competition, because I think that there's some broad scoping assumptions of, we're late to the market, people are coming in. I don't know that that's wholly true, actually. I think people are installing fiber, as the director said, but you do not have Comcast, Xfinity, or other providers saying, we're going to lay fiber in San Bruno to sell cable TV. In fact, those players are getting out of that businesses, and it's a lot of the reasons why, as we've worked to reposition the enterprise, it's internet-focused, because people consume TV via streaming platforms. And so I do think that there's some reality that can be brought about because people see fibering happening, or they see on the edges of town where someone is offering internet service, but I think it's worth always noting that you are the largest internet and cable TV provider in the city of San Bruno. And so with that said, I also think, underlying these questions, and Councilmember Medina asked it, is what is the alternative if the city does not get their internet services from CityNet? That's a larger, more in-depth question that I think the organization will be able to sort of quickly respond back, although I do know that some information can be provided But as your consultant or your independent evaluation said, if you're in the business, you have to invest in the capital infrastructure, at least something, because right now, the infrastructure, one, if you continue the status quo, will hit a fail point, and you won't be able to service your customers. You'll have 6,000, over 6,500 customers that you've had a break in your infrastructure, and you can't serve them. And so the infrastructure immediately has an immediate problem, and so that's why, as Sandeep articulated, it's a combination of fibering plus continuing with tap replacement. I also think that there is a time for the council to make the decision, because the enterprise needs to continue with tap replacements, but then also if the council does not continue with the fibering, some other infrastructure investments may very well be needed, so you can just continue to serve the customers that you serve and moderate or address the infrastructure challenges that you're having because of just the state of the enterprise. And the failures that the enterprise is having is largely based on the backbone infrastructure. And so I guess I would say, in some, there's, there needs to be a decision in some sort of reasonable amount of time where the investment decisions can be made, because as we talked about before, everyone wants to go fast, and there's a lead time on buying fiber that's several months out, right? So that's that. I do also want to say that, I guess I'm leaving here tonight with a little bit of unclarity on exactly the package of information the council wants brought back to it, and so I think it's worth clarifying that, if we can put it in a nice bow, or say, hey, the organization needs to schedule a study session to talk about that a little bit more. I've touched on a little points, and I can do a quick summary, but what I don't want is the organization to bring the council back information, but that's not the totality of information you need to make a decision.
Yeah, I'm, thank you very much, City Manager, and I think that that's absolutely correct. If there is, and we're all kind of saying in our own separate ways, some analysis and some additional data, but it is correct. What is it that the council really needs in order to search inside and figure out what direction they wish to go and what to do? And then we can have maybe, I mean, City Manager, you're welcome to state what you think you've heard, and then certainly, colleagues, I would ask you to hear that and then add to that, so that we kind of put it in a bow, and then maybe, dependent on what we hear, maybe it requires a study session rather than a council meeting, but why don't we see what kind, how much data we're kind of asking for and the time that it may take, if that's okay? City Manager?
Sure. I'll rattle off a couple things, probably not in perfect order. One is for the department to bring back the infrastructure/investment options that were presented to you late last year by the independent consultant, because there was various options presented before the council, point one. Point two, to bring back information on competition in San Bruno for paid TV as well as internet, as well as any information the organization has on new entrances into the San Bruno market by outside people, outside competitors. Three, information on recent conduit projects that have been completed in the city or that are actively under construction, and any information the city has for the companies or the reasons for that. Caveat, sometimes we know because in their encroachment permit, they've said who they're working for, other times, they're just laying conduit and will lease their real estate, right? So that may not be complete. Four, bring back additional information on profitability or projected revenue from the investment that is being requested, the $3 million. What are those projections in a detailed fashion? Five, a analysis or options to move the investment faster, knowing that wanting fiber installed as soon as possible is preferable. And I think that's it. Did I, if I missed anything, please let me know.
Thank you, City Manager. So let me go down the, or ask the table once if there's something that was needed or added or what have you. Vice Mayor.
I apologize. By the time we got to five, I forgot what one was, so it was funny.
Infrastructure from back in the November timeframe.
Okay. So was the, just the overall financial analysis, because the numbers that we have from the last financial analysis was, are getting a little stale, I think, or are they not?
So no, I mean, those were completed at the end of '22. If council is asking for a overall financial analysis of the enterprise, that study, we, it would essentially be hiring that firm to redo that study that is less than six months old.
It was from end of '22, and that's recent enough.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know that it's a redo on that.
We don't need to do that again.
I will add a six, which was Councilmember Medina's request, which is a analysis of if the city did not purchase internet, telephone services, et cetera, from CityNet, how much those would cost on the open market.
And I think you and I very much apologize, I think that you were some, it was articulated a little bit about what that potential could be to the organization.
Yes.
By not having that. But yes, just bring it back. Yeah. Thank you.
And, and under that scenario, though, there are other costs that the city would bear, and I think having those as a part of that portrait would be helpful, so you understand it's not just you have to now purchase your services that you were getting from a division of the city from somewhere else, there are other costs that you would incur. That is a part of that picture. I do think that that level of analysis is very detailed and may take several months, and so there may be components of this that can come sooner than later, but those are the six items as I've recited.
Is there anything else to be added? No? No? Anything else to be added for analysis or data?
We have six.
There are six items that have been articulated. One, two, three, four. So I have six so far, is there anything else? Okay. I'm hearing that, well, the City Manager and Director, you have the six items, and you articulated that well, thank you for your assistance.
Thank you.
So with that, there, we are not taking action, we are then actually having that come back? Is that fair? And I've been asked, no, I'm not just, we are going to, and I do want to thank you very much for the presentation, I want to thank the team that is here, I want to thank you for the job that you do. We are going to just take, and I mean, five minutes recess so that everybody can come back, because we've had two gentlemen that have been patiently waiting for us on their topic. So thank you, and we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Now we are back from recess. We convene for the April 11th City Council meeting. We are on item number seven, public hearing.
Item number seven, public hearings. Consider adoption of a resolution approving, authorizing, and directing execution of a joint exercise of powers agreement related to the California Municipal Finance Authority and approving the issuance of exempt facility bonds for a qualified housing project at 732 to 740 El Camino Real by the authority for the purpose of financing or refinancing the acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain facilities for the benefit of San Bruno Pacific Associates and California Limited Partnership.
Thank you very much, Director. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
Through the chair. One second.
And I apologize. I jumped too quick.
Actually, due to the proximity of my residence to this project, I'm going to have to recuse myself again tonight. And so I will be leaving the dais. And since this is our last action item, I will excuse myself from the rest of the meeting. So, good night and good luck.
Thank you. So Councilmember Salazar is recused. Thank you for the pause. And no problem. And now we will turn it over to the Director.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is the agenda for the item. We're going to go through the objective of the, of, of tonight. We're going to go through some background on the housing project that is the subject of the proposed bonds. Talk about the California Municipal Finance Authority or the CMFA, which is the authority that, under this, if this is approved, would issue the bonds, hold the hearing on the topic of the bonds, and then have recommended action. So the objective, there's the long version in the staff report and in the, in the title of the, of the agenda, but it's to join the California Municipal Finance Authority, Joint Powers Authority, and to conduct a public hearing and to consider approval of the issuance of exempt facility bonds by the authority for a qualified residential project. So first, we'll talk a little bit about the project itself. While the project does have all of its planning-related approvals, still give a quick overview of it. The subject site is, is 0.6 acres. It's a vacant parking lot, the east side of El Camino Real. It is in the TOD-2 High Density Mixed Use Zone. The project itself is a six-story, 134-unit project. As part of the city's approval of planning permits for this project, the project has to have at least 40 below-market-rate units. The project provides 25 parking spaces, which is notably less than what would normally be required. And just as, as a note, the vehicular access to, to the parking areas are from El Camino Real. Now I'm going to talk about the review process that the, the project went through. As I noted, it has the necessary city approvals to move forward. The review process was highly affected by state laws, in particular SB 35. This affected the parking that the city could or could not require as part of the project due to the proximity of the site to transit, as well as it required that the project be approved ministerially without a hearing. There's also then the density bonus law. There have been numerous updates to that statute. But it basically requires that if an applicant provides a certain percentage of units as affordable, then the city has to approve additional units in the project and approve flexibility in the development standards, which can be height, it can be massing setbacks, open space requirements. So as part of this project, that had to be done as well. So that really limited the city's ability to review the project. When the project came in, in September of 2021, there was a council study session held in October of 2021 to introduce the state laws and the project. It really wasn't a discussion of the project because, as that staff report at the time noted, state law was going to limit our ability to, to comment on the, on aspects of the project. The project did still have to go through some rounds of revisions with staff to make sure it provided all of the exhibits that were required. And it was initially approved without a hearing in June of 2022. There were some minor amendments made or proposed, and those amendments were approved in, in December of 2022. So at this time, the project applicant has applied for building permits and has, has, in the process of going through plan review, and there is a very high likelihood that the permits will be ready to be issued before the summer. So that brings us to the topic of, of the financing of the project. So the, so the development group has applied from the Calif, applied for $60 million in tax-exempt bonds from the California Municipal Financing Authority, which is why this agenda item is being held. Going to talk about what the CMFA is. They are a Joint Powers Authority that was created in 2004. They have the authority to issue tax-exempt bonds for a variety of project types, including multifamily housing projects, including affordable multi-housing, multifamily housing projects. It's important to note that it is the CMFA that will issue these bonds. There's no cost or liability or obligation by any of the members of, of the JPA. But in order to be able to issue those bonds to a project within our, our boundaries, the city does have to join the CMFA. There are over 350 California agencies in this group, including locally Belmont, Daly City, Menlo Park, Redwood City, San Mateo, South San Francisco, and San Mateo County itself. There's no cost to being a member, and a member can withdraw from the JPA at any time. So the second aspect of, of this agenda item, the first being the consideration of joining the CMFA, is holding a public hearing for the tax-exempt bonds. So as the agency that has the authority over the geography in which this project is being proposed, the City Council has the authority to give host approval of the tax-exempt bonds. That, that host approval has to be done at a public hearing that provides the public with the opportunity to weigh in on whether the tax-exempt funds should be approved for this project. That then brings us to the recommendation for tonight, which is to adopt a resolution that is attached with the staff report, to join the CMFA, to conduct a public hearing for the bond for the eligible project at 732 to 740 El Camino Real, and then to, as part of that same resolution, approve CMFA's issuance of the bond for the project. With that, I'm available for any questions. We also have representative from the CMFA, as well as a representative of the development team, if the council has any questions.
Thank you very much. Bring it to council, see if there's any questions on the presentation at this time.
I'm going to start with just a basic question. Did this project lose two units? It was originally 136, and now it's 134?
Between the time it first went, or was first brought forward, it, it ended up at 134.
Okay. But it's still the same number of, of below-market?
There are, in our entitlement, they are required to do at least 40 affordable units.
Got it. Okay. The, the website still says 136.
We will correct that.
Okay. The, and then just to be, just to be clear for folks who are watching, the, San Bruno is not taking on debt. We are not responsible for the bonds. There's, this is us joining the authority to allow these bonds to be issued to fund this project. We're not accepting it. We're not taking on any liability for this project.
That's exactly right.
Okay. I know the answer to that. I just wanted to articulate it clearly. Thank you.
Other questions on the presentation at this time? Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am just wondering, was there any other proposed design with regards to how many units and how many parking that was initially submitted to the city? Or was it always 137 and then 25 parking stalls?
My understanding is that it's always been in this, the ballpark of the 136 to 134 with one level of parking. So the ground level of the building is parking, and in that space, they're able to fit the 25 spaces.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see if there's, this is a public hearing, so this is the opportunity in which the public has this opportunity to please raise your virtual hand if you wish to speak on this item.
We do have two hands raised.
Please.
The first one is going to be Alexandra Melendez. Alexandra, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right.
I'm guessing, guessing I could start.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name Alexandra Melendez. I am a lifelong resident of San Bruno. I've been here for 30 years. Now it's going 30 years. It's been a while since I've been at City Council. My official capacity in my work is as the National Chapter Manager for GMB Action. That being said, I've spent roughly six years working on housing throughout San Mateo County, Santa Clara, and state. That includes deed-restricted affordable housing. I want to highlight the importance that this proposal would bring to our city. You've heard me at other city council meetings before, but it's important to reiterate how behind we are on some of our housing needs allocations, how behind we are in housing our neighbors, our residents, our community members. I think this is a good proposal. Any affordable housing developer, market-rate developer, it doesn't matter who it is, would tell you that two things, there are two things that significantly cost housing. And that's time and also parking. There are other costs as well, but those are two big ones. What you have here is a good proposal. It would not cost the city a cent. We've had run-ins with the state before when it comes to compliance, the Housing Accountability Act, you know, RENA prior proposals, and project rejections. I just wanted to reiterate that this is a good proposal. This, joining the CF, CFMA would do good to make sure that we can ultimately finance this project and make sure that we can house the people who need, not just the affordable housing the most, but all housing the most. We really need to be able to address our housing shortage. So please move forward with this item without additional amendments and with haste. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is, excuse me, while I go back to that screen. The next speaker is Irving Torres. Irving, are you there? Can you hear me?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Medina, members of the San Bruno City Council, City Manager Grogan, and City Staff. My name is Irving Torres, and I'm a resident of San Bruno. I'm speaking tonight to ask the City Council to adopt a resolution for the city of San Bruno to become a member of the CMFA and approve the CMFA's issuance of exempt bonds for the 732, 740 El Camino Real project. As mentioned in the staff report, this project will count towards the city's RENA goals, and there is no cost associated with membership in the CMFA. And the city will in no way become exposed to any financial liability by reason of its membership in the CMFA. The cost of living income inequality continues to create disruptions of individuals and families just trying to get by. This project will create some affordable housing units to serve all members of our community. The project is located where walkable public transit options are nearby. Any addition to the resolution will create more delays to the project, will recreate dramatic repercussions and lock many more people into a population that will be housing insecure for a long time. I thank the City Council for your continued leadership in addressing the issues and needs of our community and for holding this public hearing. I hope the City Council will approve the resolution, which will help to build more affordable housing, because no matter what we look like, how much we earn, or where we lay our heads down to sleep, we all need a safe place to call home. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
There are no further hands raised.
Okay, this is the last call for, this being the public hearing. Once we close the public hearing, there will not be another opportunity. Is there any other virtual hands?
No, there are not.
Okay. With that, bring, council, if we can make a motion, an action to close the hearing.
I will move to close the public hearing. Second?
Motion, Hamilton, seconded Marty Medina to close public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Four oh, one recusal by Councilmember Salazar, who's obviously not here to vote. Public hearing is, is concluded. With that, let's bring it back to the council for any comments. Councilmember Medina.
Sure. Thank you for the presentation. Probably the, the most important thing here, and the Vice Mayor said it, the staff report said it, there is no financial liability for the city in moving forward with this action. I do find it interesting that, why, why are we even here? The state has taken away our right to decide on a project and dismisses the impact to our current residents. My preference would be, if the state is going to mandate housing requirements, then they should make, take full responsibility for the funding process. If the intent is to streamline the approval process, then perhaps they should amend their regulations and laws. I understand the need for housing in San Bruno. I'm in favor of housing in San Bruno. The concept of providing parking exemptions to denser housing located near transit makes sense, and now it's the law. So I do have concerns about the residents. This is in my district. Parking is already very, very difficult. I don't know, and I could, for full disclosure, I was approached right before the meeting of, by, and I'm sorry, I don't recall your name. I was in the midst of doing something, but I heard a little bit about the efforts to minimize the impact. This is the first time I heard it, right? I have, I haven't, and I, I'm sorry, could, Mr. Mayor, is it okay to identify the gentleman?
Let me, City Attorney, because what I, what I think you're trying to do is just disclose that you had a conversation.
Yes, yes.
But now you wanted them introduced.
Well, I used to recall his name, and I was in the midst of a meeting, and it was just a really quick thing. So I wanted, for full disclosure, we had maybe about two sentences of conversation, right? And I, and I wasn't, I was thinking, well, if we're going to have a meeting, let me finish. Just really, I'll keep it real short. If we're having a meeting, then it's like, then I'd love to share it, right? Because Because I don't, I don't think anybody is in this room to hear it, but it'll be recorded, and it was really nice to know.
Okay, let's pause because I want to keep to the topic that we're on. So now we're, but, so I want to walk carefully. Yes, City Attorney. I mean, just getting somebody's name is fine. Yes.
Mayor Medina, if, you know, the hearing's been opened, it's been closed, now you're doing council member comments. I think it's up to the chair whether you want to allow a council member to bring somebody up to introduce them or something in connection with their comments.
You know, I'm not sure where we're going, but if the name is important, then, I don't know. Can you please just, would you... No, that's fine. Thanks, Jean is her first name? Okay, thank you. From the Development Team.
All right.
Yes, Jean.
Jean, and I apologize, I was in the midst, and I was like, I wasn't sure if, anyhow, I wasn't sure if Jean was going to speak, but I guess he's not, but he did speak just for a little bit. So, thank you for that. I understand that there is some conversations about looking into parking spaces at nearby churches, and so that was definitely nice to hear for the first time. I think the, I think the neighbors on Hensley would definitely appreciate that that amount of thought has been expended, and hopefully something works out because, let's be brutally honest, everyone.
Just, I just want to keep, I'm sorry, I apologize, I keep... I just want to make sure we're kind of keeping to the item that's on the agenda, which is about approving to join the CMFA.
Your Honor? I'm looking, I'm just teasing, I'm looking at our City Attorney. This is close enough, I think. I mean, I'm not going to stray too far, but I think it's important. It's about the project, and the project has details, Your Honor, and, no, seriously, though.
Mayor Medina, I, and Councilmember Medina, I will defer to the mayor's, the chair, about, you know, the conversation. The agenda topic is a public hearing on the financing. The financing discussion can include comments about the project and how the money would be used, but this is a hearing on the financing.
And this is understood, and this is where I think the connection can be made, that the financing is necessary for many reasons, and parking is expensive. And I'll leave it at that. I do appreciate you being here and the effort that I heard for the first time today, so. We are in a situation where we need to build more housing, and this is, this is a way that it's going to proceed.
On the other...
Brief comment.
Yeah, and I have one.
Just a brief comment. We absolutely do need to build housing. We need to build affordable housing. And the, the total number from this project, whether it be 136 or 134, was included in our RENA allocation to the state. So, we, and this project, you know, up until we heard about this financing requirement, was moving forward anyway. And it's going to be moving forward, so I will be supporting the action tonight.
Thank you, and I think, I don't need to re, I mean, you've stated it. I think I want to clarify, though, one caller did say, "we," quote, "we can finance." So, "we" is not "us." So, I just want to make that clear because we were very clear in the first beginning of this, and it's not that, but I just want to clarify for those that may be listening. Again, I think the only thing, and I can tell you that the RENA numbers are correct with what you said, whether it's 134 or 136, housing, affordable housing are necessary and important, and we need to get with that. Councilmember Medina has comments on the overall aspect of it, which I understand and share. And again, this is just to join the CMFA, which there are no costs, no obligations. We can get out at any time. It is just a formality to this project, and it's not about the project, it's about the financing. So, as if there's no other questions or comments, this is an action item, it is a resolution.
Just one point of clarification. It's to join the CMFA and to provide host approval for this project. So, it's both those things. But I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolutions as read by the deputy city clerk.
I second.
Motion, Hamilton, second Alvarez. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four oh, with one recusal from Councilmember Salazar. Thank you, and thank you for your patience, for being here and staying through the meeting. Thank you. Have a good rest of your week, drive home safe. All right, let's move on to item number nine, Council Committee Reportouts. Are there any reportouts?
I have a very brief one.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
So, I participated in new board member orientation for Pacific Clean Energy on March 29. It was a fire hose of information into my brain about the California energy markets and, and all the really great work that PCE is doing in operating in that space between procuring and developing unclean sources of energy and allowing our residents to purchase that. So, I learned a whole bunch, and it was, I won't even attempt to relay all of that here in this comment, but the, the, the biggest takeaways from there was the fact that, that, you know, since its inception, our electric customers have saved $107 million in, in energy costs, prevented, and then, and, by purchasing 100% clean energy, which prevented the creation of 1.2 million metric tons and counting of CO2. So, I just wanted to report out on participating in that orientation, and I'm a huge fan of this organization. I'm glad to be part of it now.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Medina.
Yes, just a personal comment. Just wanted to wish my dad a, I'm sorry.
Committee Reportouts.
Oh, well, I'll report that later.
Yep. Okay, no problem. With that, now, we'll move on to item 10, and if I'd like to go to Councilmember Medina first.
Right, so as, as I was saying, my, my dad celebrated his 90th birthday on the 7th, and he occasionally watches this council meeting, so I just wanted to wish him a really happy birthday, and I love you, Dad.
May I say, before I turn it over to the Vice Mayor, happy birthday, Mr. Medina, from the mayor. Vice Mayor.
Just going to say, I didn't know that your birthday was so close to your dad's. It's Councilmember Medina's birthday tomorrow, so just mentioning that. Happy birthday.
Okay, and me, two things, and I don't want to add on a saddened note, but I'm going to, unfortunately. But first, before I go there, I wanted to, once again, conclude tonight's meeting and thank our City Manager, Javon Grogan, and his family for all their tireless efforts and all your work. And you got us through this meeting, so thank you for that, too, and getting it plated up for the intro, City Manager. The other thing, too, is, in the last six days, unfortunately, I've attended two funerals for folks that have died of auto accidents. And one is Ruben Lopez, and one was this morning Sergio Quilichi. And it is saddened that we lose, in Ruben's case, his wife is now without her husband, children without a father. In the case of Sergio, he would be, he had been married 29 days, aged 34, was on his way to work, and never came home. I was talking to Sergio's wife's parents, and I think they said something to me at church today, which was, what can we take away from this? Is there anything that we should be telling each other? And I think one said, you know, it's okay to be late to places, and that's how one of these happened, distraction. The other thing was, we all need to take a little step back. And oddly enough, as I was going to get dressed for the funeral, as I'm at a light, and we had the green light, there comes a car barreling through, which means they went completely through a red light making a left-hand turn off El Camino Real, that San Bruno Avenue, which is not safe. And it happens more and more that I see. I bring that up to close in their memory and sadness to be at these services, but in some of these things, what will tell me as far as a positive is Sergio's mother today said to the person that alleged caused the accident that she, first and foremost today, was to pray for that person, to pray for their family. And so that is one thing that is, the strength of that family is amazing to me. But I think it is a lesson learned that we all should kind of slow down, think. It's okay to be late, and maybe ratchet it back a little bit. So with that, I want to thank everyone for their time and the staff. And again, we will now adjourn this meeting to the next regular City Council meeting, which will be held April 25, 2023, at 7:00 PM. Meeting adjourned.